All right, we are preparing to livestream, it'll be just a couple more seconds. All right, we are up and running and live on YouTube.
Well, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Weld County School District Six. Today is the eighth day of June 2020, and this meeting will now come to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Kay, will you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Papas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Ms. Green. Again, we are glad for all those who are joining us, that you are joining us. Just to let you know, the board held a test meeting just prior to going live, and we did that just to ensure that our technology was working, no school business was discussed at that. It has been very incredible few months with first a pandemic and then which put us into a budget crisis. And now with current events that have saddened everyone. We are as sad as anyone to see what has happened. And so we know that there is a lot of a lot of people listening to and rethinking the idea of systemic injustice. And that is something that we as a board are feel like we're very familiar with. And that's partly because of the funding issue that we have in Colorado school districts where some districts are funded, wealthier districts are funded better. It's not something that probably anybody ever set out to do. Hopefully, it's not something that anybody ever set out to do. But it is the situation that we find ourselves in where our funding formula in Colorado funds funds wealthy kids one way and poorer kids another way. And while we have the attention, while the attention is turned towards systemic injustice, we want to bring that up again as we have as board so many times and call on our legislature to address the funding formula to better fund our students, but to address the inequities that exist in our formula so that it is a student-centered funding formula where students who need additional services, students who need additional teachers, those students are funded better, we're better funding, putting the money where the need is rather than simply giving it to districts where there's a greater cost of living. So we call on our legislature again to address this formula, we appreciate the steps that they've taken in the last week or so, but would just ask again that they look at this formula, that they that they finally address the inequities that are there. Tonight, we are going to be recognizing some of our volunteers. And when, for anyone who looks at the number of hours that we have, it is an incredible amount of hours that some of these people give into over, into the hundreds, but some over a thousand hours that they volunteer in our district. And we appreciate all of our volunteers greatly, but we especially appreciate the people that we're going to recognize tonight that spend so much time in our district, in our schools, and loving our kids. You have our complete admiration. Those are all of the comments that I have tonight, we'll get to hear from board members later. But we are now to the portion where we're going to hear people who desire to speak before the board. And Ms. Green, I do believe that we have someone that is desiring to speak to us tonight.
That is correct, Mr. Ryan Thompson has asked to speak to the board and he can begin now.
Hello, my name is Ryan Thompson. I'm a teacher at McAuliffe STEM Academy. I teach seventh grade social studies. I'm a parent of a future kindergarten student who will be attending that school with me next year as well, as well as a community member here in Greeley. I wanted to take just a quick amount of time to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Pilch, for all the work that you all have been doing tirelessly and along with everyone else in the district, not only in the response to COVID, but in the response now we have to these uncertain budget shortfalls. Mr. Matthews, some of the things that you touched on here at the start. And I just wanted to encourage everyone to learn about initiative number 271, which you can learn about at fairtaxcolorado.org, and the things that are being done at the state level to address these budget shortfall issues that we have in this time of the COVID pandemic and in social distancing and in keeping everyone safe. Volunteers with the Fair Tax Colorado Initiative are setting up on Saturday, June 13th, booths around the state where people, if they have not yet had an opportunity to sign a petition, to put initiative 271 on the ballot in November, they will have an opportunity to do so. On Saturday, June 13th, I myself will be set up near McAuliffe on the corner of Fourth Street and 51st Avenue in the morning from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., having materials available for people to come and sign to get us to put this initiative on the ballot. And I would invite anyone that hasn't had a chance to sign the petition yet to swing by McAuliffe on Saturday, June 13th and sign. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We never respond to people who bring comments to us, but we do appreciate that you brought these. We, as I mentioned, are going to get to hear from board members because of these, I hate to say unprecedented times, but they are unprecedented times. We wanted to give board members just a moment to share what's on their hearts and how they're feeling. And so we will do this in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Hayfley, if you would lead off for us.
Two best words in English language are, "I forgot." You know, as I reflect on all these challenging times, the first thing I want to do is look at my esteemed colleagues on the Board of Education and thank each of you for your commitment, your compassion, and your love of all of our students. And that's evident in all the decisions that you make and you should each be proud of those. You know, to all of our students and parents, this has been a tough time and each of you should be very proud of how you've handled the distance learning and how you've worked with one another to move yourselves forward as humans and academically. And, Dr. Pilch, you and your cabinet and all of the staff in District Six deserve unmatched credit for the wonderful things you've done with the COVID and the unrest in our society as we seek justice for all. And you should all be very proud of yourselves. The last 10 days have been, plus, have been extremely hard for me. I'm a white male. I've had extreme privilege during the course of my lifetime, and the last 10 days have caused me to have incredible reflection and learning. You know, George Floyd and Breonna Taylor are incredibly obvious people that we look to as part of this, and I was doing some research and there was a gentleman named Javier Ambler in Austin, Texas. And he was coming home from spending some time with his friends playing cards. And the Williamson County Sheriff's in Austin, Texas, pulled him over for having his bright song too loud, too high. And they pulled him from the car and he had congestive heart failure. And he told the deputies that. And they still tased him four times. And ultimately, they killed him, and this was in late March. And I would know nothing about Javier if it hadn't been for what has occurred during the last 10-plus days. And so what I would challenge everybody in the United States to do is to look into their hearts to see how they can help eradicate racism as well as help create justice for all. And as board members, we have a wonderful opportunity to do this, and the only way I think that it can occur is through education. And I know that the people that I work with will do this as we move forward. So I want to thank you, Dr. Pilch, and the cabinet for trying to set us on the right path so that justice is found.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. I think Ms. Mash is next.
Yes. Well, I thank you for the opportunity to share what's been on my heart, and I hope you all forgive me. I wrote things down so that I could remember exactly what I wanted to say. But I am an optimist, I usually find the good in every situation. But sometimes I'm so positive that I don't take the time to sit with someone in their pain or in their trouble. So today, I believe it's been 14 weeks of the coronavirus in our community, and I just wanted to acknowledge that this is hard. It's been hard financially, it's been hard on relationships, and of course, it's been very hard on some people physically. Our experience have had varying degrees of difficulty, but we've all been affected. But then, as an optimist, I want to acknowledge the hard, and then I want to look for the hope and the joy and the way forward. The hard is that we will experience a significant budget shortfall in our district. But the hope and the joy are found in our solid leadership and our community support. School in the fall will look very different. The economy will be slow to recover, but we have banded together and we've learned much over the last three months that will help us in the fall. As once again horrific injustices have been committed against the black community, I've been listening, thinking, and watching, but I know that those things are not enough. My friend Lisa Taylor, she's also the Executive Director of IRC NOCO, has allowed me to share her call to action for the support of white community. This is what she writes, "I want to speak bluntly. We must humbly recognize our privilege and our blind spots. We must actively listen to those with lived experience, those who have been on the receiving end of our intentional and unintentional tendencies to preserve our own power. We must be part of the healing, which includes both standing with our black neighbors and dismantling the systems that continue to oppress them. I am convinced that the moral arc of the universe will not ultimately bend towards justice without us actively engaging in that work." She writes, "As supporters of IRC NOCO and allies of our immigrant and refugee community, and I would say as supporters and allies of our students of color, I'm asking that you commit and I am promising to commit alongside with these types of organizations as a whole and our community as a whole, to stand in solidarity with our black community and to the hard work ahead. Black lives matter." And to that end, our district is committed to providing an excellent education for all students. And we will continue to examine which pieces of the educational system are oppressing and hindering our students of color. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Ms. Mueller?
So I've thought a lot about what I would want to say, and it seems challenging to find all the right words to express what our country has gone through with the coronavirus and our social distancing, our quarantining, how challenging that has been for families who are doing virtual education, how challenging it is for our individuals in society that struggle with mental illness, how challenging it's been for our teachers who've worked so hard and our administrators to make sure that people are still getting high-quality education in this circumstance. But the past couple of weeks have been especially challenging because as a student and teacher of sociology, I have spent many, many years studying the history of this type of oppression and trying to understand my place in it as well as my own privilege. For those who don't understand privilege, I'm going to tell you it's one of the hardest things to teach and it's one of the hardest things to talk about. Racism is particularly hard to teach because people don't like to recognize the long legacy of our country of violence, oppression, and exploitation. But we have to embrace that historic legacy if we're ever going to move forward, we really do. So I've also been a teacher of social movements, and I know social movements historically work. So I want to say to the students who have been part of the social movements and the protests that have happened the last couple of weeks, you really are the people who make things happen. And it has traditionally been college students and high school students, that age group. I'm really proud of you, I just want to say that. It's hard to stand up and have a voice. And for all of us who come from the white Anglo-Saxon Protestant Caucasian identity, we, I think, are compelled to partner and ally in ways that are meaningful, not just paying lip service to something we think we believe in or say we believe in, but truly be meaningful in our partnership and our allyship with people of color. And for the most part, that means shutting up and listening and validating people's pain and moving forward to call for change in policy, for advocacy, and to say whether people understand what it means or not, black lives do matter. It's a human response and we need to embrace it. And for those who aren't sure in terms of faith, I am a Christian and I believe it's the Christian response. We have to truly understand that black lives matter. Thank you to everybody for all the hard work you do, and I encourage people to continue to go out to the various vigils and protests. I know there is another one coming up at UNC, the University Center this Saturday. So please continue to engage in this process. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Papas, you're up.
Black lives matter, and I am proud to live in this beautifully diverse community. When I moved here in 1966 as an 11-year-old, I was told, "Sorry, you are moving to a city of wide streets and narrow minds." And that was true then. However, in the last several days, I had the opportunity to attend a vigil for George Floyd and a protest at Monver Park on Saturday. Being at a protest led by young people of color in 2020 was something I never imagined. I also never imagined that our Greeley community would come together and be allies, and I am so grateful for that. What I also couldn't imagine is that in 2020, we are still here fighting racial injustice. As District Six Board members, elected officials, it is our responsibility to watch out for every student, that we do not let bias, racism, discriminate, any type of discrimination in our schools. We have adopted anti-discrimination policies, anti-bullying policies, anti-hate policies, and we are currently in the process of revising our strategic plan Innovation 2030. And we have recently adopted our values and beliefs statements. Our students come first, we know that every child can achieve. We believe that diversity is a strength, we ensure safe, secure, and healthy schools. We build relationships with students, families, and communities. We promote access, opportunity, and choice, and we commit to hiring and retaining quality staff with the major goal of hiring people of color. We commit to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement. Now more than ever, we must maintain our vigilance and our intentionality to ensure that there is no doubt that these values and beliefs are District Six, that racial injustice will not be tolerated in our schools, and that we commit and promise that staff, parents, and community members know and understand this. I have been in District Six in some capacity for 38 years, and in those years, I have seen attempts to provide equity and diversity training, cultural proficiency training, and poverty training. These attempts were implemented with the minds of caring leaders and teachers. However, with changing leadership, I have witnessed the abandonment and lack of focus and resource allocation in these areas. And I believe our students, our families, and staff have been victims of these changing philosophies. During the last five years, this board and the previous board and Dr. Pilch, her leadership team, have committed the commitment to these shared values and beliefs. As board members, it is our responsibility to create such a strong system, a belief in these statements, that future superintendents and future boards do not question the importance. And if that happens, then our community rise to the occasion and hold everyone accountable for their personal and collective actions of equity, discrimination, anti-bias, and anti-racism in our schools. Additionally, as mentioned previously, we are facing a significant decrease in funding for public education, and we are experiencing that right now. And as a board member, it is also our responsibility to advocate for statewide funding. And as Mr. Thompson mentioned earlier, we can do that by supporting the Fair Tax Colorado Initiative 271. With this decrease in funding, we have made difficult cuts, and my heart goes out to people that have lost their positions due to those cuts. And finally, we want our kids back in school, and we can help with that by practicing social distancing and wearing our masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. Ms. Solis?
So I think the fact that we are taking the time as board members to each express how we feel and what's kind of going on in our heart is an example of how serious we take this work. It would have been easy to just do a joint statement, have somebody kind of touch it up, add some things, take some things out, but that's not what we do at District Six. It was important for each of us as board members to express our thoughts, our feelings, our hopes, and also give voice to what we are already doing within the district. COVID has been really hard. When we first talked about it, I worried about our kiddos because I know how much they depend on meals. I know how much they depend on seeing that constant teacher that's in their life that they've developed relationships with, the person that greets them in the office, and just knowing that we're keeping an eye on them and making sure that they're safe. And I think that's been hard on all of our staff to not see their kids. And I know it's been hard for us as district people to not go to graduations, not see their faces, not see them complete all the things that they've worked so hard over this last school year. So COVID has been extremely difficult. And then we saw what happened at JBS, and I know that a lot of our students have parents that work there. And again, you look at how many lives were lost at JBS and how many were people of color. It's a hard, hard job, and a lot of people of color in this community have taken on those roles, whether it's working in the field, working at the plant, working on farms. And so we have a lot of people of different backgrounds that do this hard, hard work. Then on May 28th, I came home for lunch and my son was home, and he showed me a video. And it was hard to watch. And then he told me that George Floyd had actually passed away. And I went back to work and I didn't even know how to wrap my brain around it. And then over the weekend, it was on my mind, things were on the news, and then Monday I went to work. And even my boss could tell that I wasn't the same. I'm grateful to the kids that have stepped up, they saw something and they said something, which, as a school board member, I know I say this a lot, but I'm just astonished of what we expect our youth to do. And sometimes we as adults don't even do that. I went to two vigils, I've been to two protests, and it's been amazing to see the people that have shown support, that have come together, that have also agreed enough is enough. We need to do better, we know that we should be doing better, and we can do better. And we as community members need to demand that we all do better. I am so proud of the courage that these kids have to put these things together and to voice their pain. I know the riots have been hard to watch, and the first thing that came to my mind was that is literally looking at the insides of some of these people of color and what their experiences are. And for as awful as it is to watch, my heart broke because I know that's what it looks like, and it's just coming out on the outside. I've seen community members say some really awful things, and it's been hard to grapple with those people who are going to pick a side and people who I thought, you know, had the same kind of feelings that I did. And so some real tough conversations are going to need to happen in this community, and we can't change what we don't acknowledge. There's no more putting it under the rug, there's no more acting like the racial jokes in our employment areas are funny. There's no more sharing information that is hurtful. We need to do a better job and be the example for our kids. And the amount of pain that you saw when we talked, when we heard our African-American students, especially from UNC speak, it was heart-wrenching because I know we don't have a lot of African-American kids here and families. And I know that's because it's been difficult for them to not only just go to school there, but then to continue staying here after they graduate. And if we're ever going to have a district that reflects our community, then we've really got to have those students stay in our community. And we have got to do a better job to make sure that we welcome them and bring them into our community and make sure that they know that we want them here. The other thing I've been very vocal about is those stuff that we do on the board is a huge impact. We have a couple of, you know, board seats that will be open next year, and I'm really encouraging people of color to consider running for school board. We need your lens, we need your experience, we need your story, we need your help to continue to do this work. So I really hope that people will consider putting their name in to do this work with us. I want to thank my fellow board members, I know that we all get it, I know it's in our heart. I see it when we talk about, we want to make sure that we have restorative justice in our district, that we have meditation programs, that we do yoga in our district, that we, you know, look at all the different outside-of-the-box alternatives to suspending kids or expulsion. I recently watched a video, my daughter made me do it, it's on Quibi, it's something new, and you can only watch it on your phones, but it talks about LeBron James and the school that he put together, and it's called I Promise. And she was just, she was bawling after watching it because she knew how hard school was for some of these kids and the challenges that they have, and she was so excited to see some of the programs that they were putting in the school. In watching it with her, she was asking me questions, you know, "Mom, what do you guys do about this? Mom, do you guys have that?" And it was, I was so proud to say, "We do that. We do that for our kids, we get it that our kids have trauma. We make sure that we partner with community organizations like North Range. We have been doing this," and I told her about my visit at Jefferson and how emotional it was for me because I see the amazing things that our teachers do for kids and how hard they work to calm them down, to make them feel part of this district, and to make them feel like they're enough. And so I was so proud to be able to tell her all the different things in that video that we actually do in our district. And she was really, really proud of the work that we do. And she was really, really proud of the work that we do and really saw how important it is to actually run for office and be on a board. And I also told her we couldn't do this work without Dr. Pilch. And leadership really does matter. And the person who was in charge of the I Promise School, she had so much weight on her shoulders and she carried this stuff with her every day. And I told her that's our Dr. Pilch. She does that all the time for all of our kids. And she wants to make sure that every single kid has either a diploma and is ready to go on to college or that they are ready to go into the workforce and that we've prepared them. So I want to thank everyone at District Six. I want to thank my fellow board members. I want to thank Dr. Pilch for all the work that we do because to be able to tell my daughter that all that stuff that you just saw, we do that too. We care that much. We love that much. It was really a great moment for me. So, thank you. I hope to see you guys all on Saturday. I'll be there and let's continue to work.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Mr. Tally?
This was hard to listen to everyone speak and to hear what everyone had to say. Being a black male, I know. I think that's the easiest way to put it as I know. Had an incident and I shared with another board member last week in a business here in Greeley. And never did I think that I would face something straight to my face like that in Greeley because of the diversity that we have, but it happened. And it just goes to show that this world just hasn't moved forward and that we have to stick together. I'm gonna try to keep this short and I'm gonna try not to get emotional. I'm working on that part of it. But in light of all that's happening in our world right now, I'm saddened. I am saddened by the actions that some of our adults are taking. And more so, I'm saddened by some of the things that I hear in our own community. This is for all the students and the staff and the community members who have ever felt oppressed or belittled or betrayed by other members in our society. I stand with you. I stand with you in your times of happiness or disparity. You are our backbone and I want you to know that. When you speak, I will listen. When you get knocked down, I will be there to lift you up. Don't let anyone lead you to believe that what you are doing is nothing but senseless violence, destruction, and chaos. You matter to me and you matter to the world. It is my word, my obligation, and my promise that I will foster an environment for all of our students and staff to feel appreciated, heard, and welcomed. As my ancestor, the great Chief Sitting Bull, once said, "We must put our minds together and see what we can build for our children." I will work closely with the members of the board and make sure your success is at the forefront of all of our decisions as it always has been. I'll end by a quote. Many of you have probably watched the movie Freedom Riders. And I, this just right now is so fitting and I thought that I would share it with you all. But it's by the time you try to defend a child in court, the battle has already lost. The real fight starts in a classroom. And I think that that couldn't be any more true than right now. And that our staff that we have in District Six truly are amazing. It was nice to see, I unfortunately wasn't able to attend any of the events last week, being out of state, but it was amazing to see pictures from staff and students in the district and out there advocating and being change agents in our society. And I am so proud to be from Greeley despite any hatred that may be in our community. I think that our love outweighs that hatred any day. As long as we stick together and we keep fighting and we keep moving, I think that we will win this battle at the end of the war. We will win the war at the end of the battle, I guess, is how it should go. But I am so proud of this board. I'm so proud of the district. And I'm so proud of the students and the staff that are sticking together and really are one big family. And like I said, I am here to stand with anyone. I am here to be a voice for and with anyone. And I look forward to seeing everyone in the future, at the future events that are happening. I am so proud to be District Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Yeah, this is a incredibly emotional issue when we talk about race for this board. I think people, whoever's listening, can certainly hear that. And I think it is that because when we say that our students come first and that we believe that every child can succeed. You know, those are not just core values on the page. That is, those are words that we believe deeply. And this is not just a political issue for us. This is about our kids. And we hear so many stories from the kids themselves, from our students, from, but from teachers and from principals. So many that are so moving, what our kids go through and the challenges that are in front of them. For anybody that wonders, we are committed to removing those obstacles for our students, to making sure that they have every opportunity. Because our world needs these kids. They need the gifts that they have and the talent they have and all the struggle that they've been through to bring that into, to the workplace, to bring that into this world. And so, again, these issues are important to us because our kids are important to us. Dr. Pilch, we do thank you and not just you, but your entire team. I've said it before, I will say it again. Good leadership is nice in good times. It is so critical in unprecedented times. And so we appreciate the way that, the work that has been done, the work that we know that you will continue to do. And so we appreciate all you guys who are on this, on this Zoom call with us. We have the deepest respect for you and the work that you do. I won't say it anymore. Thank you for those of us, for those of you who are watching, thank you for allowing us just to speak. As we've said, an important, important issue for us. So I think these are all the board member comments and reports. So I do, at this point, Ms. Crane, do you have a work session report for us?
On May eleventh, two thousand and twenty, this is the work session report. Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members. Dr. Pilch finalized the Innovation Twenty Thirty focus areas and goals with the board's input and then provided a brief budget update. The board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Dr. Pilch, we are to your report. I do believe so. I will hand this over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I appreciate the opportunity to get to share a little bit now. You know, I am so appreciative of the remarks and the comments that each of you shared as school board members. And I thank you for recognizing the pain that our community has experienced, the pain they've experienced through COVID nineteen and the loss of jobs, jobs in our community as well as some of our own staff who lost jobs. I thank you for recognizing the pain of the death of George Floyd. I am honored to work with this Board of Education. I am honored to work with such thoughtful, caring, and dedicated people. And I know that when you say that you as a Board of Education are committed and that you believe in us, your staff, to lead the work to address racism, to address barriers, systemic barriers that stand in the way of our brown students and our black students who have dreams and goals and aspirations. And most of the people doing the work in our school district are still white. And with white comes a privilege that, 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 as Pepper said, we can't explain and we can't help others to explain. But it absolutely is there and we have an obligation. And I know you all have pushed me and it challenged me and I know you expect me and my staff to ensure that we hire more staff who look like the students who we serve, who our students can see themselves in as leaders in the classroom and as school leaders. And we're committed to that work. We're committed to continuing to train all of our staff in our cultural proficiency training, our implicit bias training. And I do not take lightly, and nor does my staff, that we are only able to do that kind of deep training and have those courageous conversations because we have a seven-member Board of Education who supports us and who supports us to put time and resources into that work to impact a systemic change. You know, I am deeply saddened as you saw at the beginning of my comments. There is a tremendous amount of pain right now in our country and our community. And I am hopeful because what I know after thirty-two years of being in public education is that we, in public education, we can serve as the great equalizer. We can serve as the hope maker. And we can do what you all are asking us to do, which is have the conversation, listen, learn, and take action and remove the barriers that exist in our institution and continue to support our students as they go out into the world to lead. I want to take you all back to our strategic plan last February. And you remember the students who spoke there, most of whom were students of color. They were brown students and black students. And they talked about the importance of relationships. And they talked about the importance of how relationships with their teachers and other people in their schools impact their experiences and impact their goals and their dreams. And I want you to remember those students as I remember them. And remember the joy they shared that day, but also the pain and the sadness and the anger they shared that day. And we have an obligation here and we have an opportunity. And I believe we have the right leaders in the right place to do the work. And I believe in our Board of Education to support us in doing that work. We are going to continue to do our beyond diversity training. We will continue to implement equity teams at every school site. We will continue to review our practices and our data. We'll continue to look at discipline data, our program participation data, and we will work to remove barriers so that our data does not reflect the racism that can exist within any system. I want to address again how important it is that we focus on anti bullying as we come back to school this fall. Kids have been away from each other for several months as a result of the COVID nineteen virus. And we will have to do some work around training with students and working with students explicitly in understanding racism and ensuring that we are doing everything we can to prevent bullying in our schools as students come back. So I will just close this part of my comments with saying, I know it's impossible to not feel great anger and sadness at this senseless loss of life and it's overwhelming. And yet again, I believe there is hope to be found. A hope that demands us to be more flexible and more open and more courageous and more empathetic than we have ever been as a school system here in District Six. And like Mr. Tally said, I am District Six and I'm proud to be District Six. And now is the time for us to show great love and great kindness and great courage as we go in to planning for our next school year and what's best and what's at stake for our students. So thank you for giving me some time to comment as well. I did prepare a statement that I think went home late today and out to community members today. That statement includes some of the comments that I've shared tonight. So, but that statement will be going out from me to our community today. And then I just have a couple of more announcements I want to make and then I will stop, President Matthews. First, we did cancel the June twenty-second board meeting initially, believing that we would have our budget done and have all of our annual contracts approved by this board meeting. Because of the delay in our state legislature and getting the School Finance Act completed, we were not able to do that. So we will need to add another board meeting. It will either be June twenty-second or June twenty-ninth. Megan is certainly shooting for the twenty-second as she finalizes an initial budget for you all, but it may take just a bit longer as we wait for the final touches to come down on the School Finance Act. Tonight in our work session, we are going to give you some update on where we are with the district budget and with the state budget. We do have more information for you and we feel like we are right on in terms of our planning, just to give you a little precursor to that work. Also, tonight in our work session, we will share some of our planning for the reopening of school in August. We'll share the feedback that we've received from parents around their best hopes for our return in August. And again, a little precursor to that is that I believe we are going to have most of our schools, our students, back in our schools most of the time as we come back to school in August. So we'll share that with you in the work session. With that, I will close and pass it back to you, President Matthews. Thank you.
We need to approve an agenda tonight. And so this is an action item. And we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley? Mrs. Mash?
Hi.
Mr. Matthews?
Hi.
Mrs. Mueller?
Hi.
Ms. Papas?
Hi.
Mrs. Solis?
Hi.
Mr. Tally?
Hi.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Mr. Matthews or? I'm so sorry. I just realized that number eight says adjournment to work session and then number nine, it looks like we are voting again. So perhaps that's just a miss.
That is a great catch. We are going to, if we want to approve the intergovernmental agreement, we will need to take a motion to change the agenda. So the way this would work is you would take a motion for that. If there is a second, then you may take a vote on that agenda change. If there is not a second, then we cannot change the agenda or take a vote to change the agenda.
I move that the School Board of Greeley Evan School District Six switches numbers eight and nine on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this amendment to our agenda? All right, so in one, we will proceed to roll call vote on the amendment to the agenda.
Mr. Hayfley?
Hi.
Mrs. Mash?
Hi.
Mr. Matthews?
Hi.
Mrs. Mueller?
Hi.
Ms. Papas?
Hi.
Mrs. Solis?
Hi.
Mr. Tally?
Hi.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Great catch, Ms. Mash. Now, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Crane, we still need to approve the agenda now that we've amended it.
I know we have approved it as amended, so we are okay.
We've approved it as amended. Okay, thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. So I will need a motion to approve this as well.
I move that the Board of Education of I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Attention on the consent agenda. I'll wait to see if anybody raises their hand. Okay, seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our volunteer recognition. And so Dr. Pilch, I will turn this piece of the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. In your comments in the opening, you did a beautiful job talking about the importance of volunteers in our schools. Tonight, maybe more than ever, this recognition is so important because we might not be recognizing volunteers next year. Quite frankly, we're not sure we'll be able to welcome volunteers into our schools next fall with some of the precautions we're going to need to have in place as we come back to school. So we especially want to recognize these volunteers tonight. And I know that Ms. Myers, our Chief of Communications, is prepared to lead us through this. So I'll pass it to her, please.
Well, thank you, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, and the entire Board of Education. I appreciate this few minutes to recognize our incredible volunteers in District Six who do so much for our students every single day. We are so grateful to them. It's pretty staggering when you poll hours and statistics on our volunteers in a year where we actually didn't even complete the year with those volunteers to see just how much work they do in our schools. As most of you know, engaging volunteers is part of the strengthening partnerships goal under Innovation 2020, to create more opportunities and meaningful opportunities for those volunteers. Over, we did take statistics for a 12-month period from April 1st to March 31st. During that time, it would be April 1st, 2019, to March 31st, 2020. I'm sorry, I want to clarify that. We had 1,435 individuals volunteer at least 30 minutes at 32 different school sites in District Six. So that's a 4.4% increase from the 2018-19 school year. So we are glad to see those numbers. These volunteers served a total of 30,310 hours in District Six. That is a slight decrease from the 2018-19 school year, but it's of course not surprising because we stopped having volunteers in our schools when we shut our school buildings due to the outbreak of COVID-19. So we are actually very pleased with the numbers. That was on a great trajectory to go up significantly in the district this year, and we're grateful for all those hours. Just want to put that in a monetary component for you. Those hours of donated time are the equivalent of $849,000 in paid help, which is amazing. And you can see more about that on our website. I think all of you know that our District Six volunteers are a variety of community members. Many are parents or family members of our students or former students. We have a lot of college students, especially from the University of Northern Colorado and Ames Community College, who volunteer in our schools. We have business leaders, many, many retired educators, and just general community members who just want the experience and want to interact with our students in a positive way. They do everything from reading stories to tutoring students. They supervise research, recess, organize events, facilitate extracurricular activities. Mr. Matthews Church and others are involved in our Kids Hope Program with tutor students and mentor students after school. There are many programs like that, and we are just so grateful for all that they do. So during the 2019-20 school year until we went to complete remote learning, 53 District Six volunteers logged 100 hours or more. 53 logged 100 hours or more of volunteering. That is a huge increase from last year when that total was 29 people. So not only are we engaging more people, we're engaging more people for more time. And we know that's important in a volunteer, in a successful volunteer program because we need that sustainability. Our kids want to be able to count on those volunteers to be there, and they build relationships with them. And our teachers count on that sustained work in our schools to be able to do what they do every day. So I know that many of you know in years past, we have applied for the President's Volunteer Service Award for our volunteers who have had at least 100 hours or more. We chose not to do that this year. The cost is pretty extraordinary for those. And in a year where we're facing severe budget cuts, we chose not to do that. But also, the federal government has instituted some requirements around the applications and restrictions on those applications that we just didn't think were fair to our volunteers in District Six. So we chose not to apply for those this year. But we do want to recognize those volunteers. I'm not going to read all 53 names because you have a long agenda tonight. But I do want to recognize a couple who have been consistent and just have devoted literally hundreds of hours to our students. Our top volunteer this year who's given the most time is Judith Bennett, who is a longtime volunteer in our schools. She primarily works at Dos Rios Elementary School. She donated 1,178 hours to our school district this year. Our second-largest number of hours volunteer is Edward Frankenoff, who volunteers at Scott Elementary School, 753 hours. Madeline Shogren at Monford Elementary School donated 560 hours. Frances Foster, Fred Charter School of Innovation, donated 518 hours. Kristen Perkins, Dos Rios Elementary School, 512 hours. Manuela Jaime Bela Nueva at Dos Rios Elementary School, 345 hours. Jason Insanias, who is also a longtime volunteer in our school, donated 344 hours at Winograd. Julie Montango at Chaplo Arts Magnet and Dos Rios. She donated 324 hours. Paula Weaver, Cooter Learning Center, 323 hours. Morgane Dalton at Hyman Elementary School, 307 hours. And Megan Bellado Rhodes at McCullough STEM Academy, 306 hours. So we will be publishing these on our website so that you can all see the complete list. And we again just want to thank those incredible volunteers for all the service and all the hours they provided to our students and our staff in District Six. So thank you for the opportunity to honor them. We will also be honoring them with certificates that we'll be sending out from the district office to recognize the hours that they've given to our school district. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers, and thanks again to all of those volunteers that spend so much time in our schools and caring for our kids. We appreciate everything that you do for us, everything that you do for our students. And so thank you once again. Next item of business is our revisions to I instruction policies and regulations. So this is an action item, and we will need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six revises the I instruction policies and regulations as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. Dr. Pilch, any information you would like to give us on these I instruction policies and the changes that we're making before we take a vote on this?
Thank you, President Matthews. Why don't I just give a little overview of both I and J together, even though we're not on J yet? What you see in both sets of these policies as revisions are what we're now cleaning up in relation to the Carrasco Board recommendations. Most of them are a result of actually the last legislative session, and it's taken this long for CAFB to get them to us and for them to work through our system. So most of what you see in both the I and the J are a result of this last legislative session or changes in federal law. Really, none of these were initiated by changes here in district practice. And as we go through them, I'm happy to answer questions you all might have.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions from board members or comments from board members? I'll wait just a second so that you can unmute or raise your hand on Zoom. And I'm not seeing anything. Just a reminder to the public that we get a lengthy amount of time to read through these and see what the changes are.
Now you don't have to listen to these people anymore either.
Teresa, you're not muted.
Sorry, sorry. Guys.
All right.
I apologize. I was talking to my dog, not to anybody else. He reacts every time he hears somebody on my Zoom.
Okay. I don't see any comments or questions. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Of course.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. The next item is the J policies that Dr. Pilch referred to just a moment ago, the revision to those student regulations. And this is also an action item, so we need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six revises the J students' regulations as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. I will kick this to Dr. Pilch. Are there any comments or questions from board members on this one?
I have a quick question, Dr. Pilch. Do we currently use physical intervention restraint in our school district?
We do. I don't know if you mean by physical intervention, if that is a certain kind of restraint. We do CPI training, and that's where our restraint training is actually taught with those staff who are deemed appropriate for administering restraint. And as you can see in the policy, which aligns with our practice currently, restraint is a last resort.
And I just thought, one, sorry, just to clarify, when looking at the policy, do we utilize all of this restraint, such as the prone, the chemical, the mechanical, and the physical restraints?
No, we don't, no, no, no. If you read further, there is, most of those restraints are actually forbidden. We don't do any chemical or mechanical, for example. And I'm happy to provide you all with more information on the official language of the restraint that we do train staff in and how that training is conducted, if that's helpful. I'm happy to provide you with that. I don't think I have anybody on the meeting tonight that could go into that kind of detail for you. But I can certainly provide it in the future in our memo.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye. Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally? Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is the approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Greeley and the district. It's a cash, we call cash in lieu. And so this is an action item that requires a motion from our board, from a board member.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Greeley as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I will give this to you first and before we open this up for comments and questions from board members.
Thank you, President Matthews. You all recall that we came to you a few months ago with this possibility of a proposed intergovernmental agreement with the city of Greeley that would allow the city to collect fees on home developments, thereby passing those fees to us for future school sites. We are a couple of decades behind in forming this agreement or going this direction. Most cities and school districts have had agreements like this in place for, literally for a couple of decades. I do want to pass it to Minister Hinson if there's anything he'd like to add. And certainly if not, he's here available to answer questions for you. The path forward would be if the board chooses to approve this tonight, there will be a school board meeting on June 16th, at which we would ask if you're available to attend. They do plan to do an in-person board meeting on the 16th of June for their city council meeting, and then that's when they will take into consideration this agreement. We've been working closely with the city on this, as well as with the school districts of Windsor and Eaton, who are also looking toward the possibility of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Greeley at some time in the future. Mr. Hinson, is there anything you would add?
No, I think you did a pretty good job of explaining it. It's a pass-through fee from development to the school district for the purchase of land based on development size. We went over that a couple of months ago. On June 16th, I'd just like to correct you, Dr. Pilch, is a city council meeting, not a school board meeting. So we'll be at that city council meeting where they will be hopefully approving this agreement with the two other school districts, all of which reside within the city of Greeley.
Thank you, Mr. Hinson. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Other questions and comments from board members at this point?
I'd like to just say that when this idea was presented, it seems to me just to be another opportunity for strengthening partnerships and for working together with another board in our community and also a creative way to give the school district the opportunity to build new schools as many of you realize that Greeley is becoming, there's not a lot of open space left anymore. We are pushing up against other cities. And so for the developers to be able to give us funding to build buildings as opposed to a piece of land really makes a lot of sense and to me is a creative way to help the district in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Are there any other board member questions or comments? I know we've discussed this quite often, it seems like. And it's pretty straightforward for anybody who hasn't, who's watching tonight but hasn't heard the discussion before. This saves future taxpayers money because we're able to purchase land before we're ready to build with a bond issue so we can purchase it at a better price. And it really is advantageous to the school district, and the things that are advantageous to the school district are ultimately advantageous to the city. So we hope that this will be received favorably by the city council. I'm still not seeing any hands. So Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business is a Title X middle form. And I do believe that this is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the Title I trans-middle form as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Uh, Dr. Pilch, uh, would you like to give us some information on this, uh, before we open this up for questions and comments?
Thank you, President Matthews. Um, this is the sign-off by the Board of Education that allows us to submit our consolidated grant, um, to the Federal Department of Education. And basically the consolidated grant is the grant that takes care of all of our title grants. So Title One, Two, Three, Two A. Um, and, uh, this allows us to submit that grant application and to begin to claim our federal dollars for next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions or comments from board members? Not seeing any. But again, this is a, a pretty straightforward, uh, motion, uh, and piece of business for us. This allows us to receive, as you said, federal money. So, um, Ms. Crane, will you give us a, a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Hi.
Mrs. Mash?
Hi.
Mr. Matthews?
Hi.
Mrs. Mueller?
Hi.
Ms. Pappas?
Hi.
Mrs. Solis?
Hi.
Mr. Tally?
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, I do believe that's all the business that we have tonight. And so, um, it is right now six eleven. And we're going to have a work session in just a few moments, but we'll take a five or four-minute break this time. Uh, now a three-minute break, uh, if that's okay. Um, and, uh,
And it's five, it's five eleven, not six eleven.
Oh, yes, I'm in Alabama. It's six eleven. It's five eleven where you are, sorry. So, uh, five, five fifteen, let, let's try to be back here, if that's okay with everybody, uh, for our work session. Uh, our business meeting is now adjourned. Can you guys all hear the rain? On my, um, that we're getting? No?
Oh, I can't hear it, but.
Okay.
We're supposed to get a big storm here, too. So it might get blown inside.
It's coming a, a downpour here.
Are you at a lake?
I, I. Yes, um, so I'll turn around where I'm, I don't know if you can see, I don't know. That's where, that's where I am at the moment. I don't know if anybody can see that or not. Well, it, it would be, really, it was great yesterday. But it's, uh, and it's been great most of the day, but it is, it is coming down right now.
My kids went to the pool today. Yep.
The pool's open?
So it's open?
Some of the private pools are, so, are the, the membership pools. So yeah, bittersweet pools open. They, they have some pretty good precautions in place, I think. John, did the city pools open? Let's ask, um, Mayor Gates if the city pools opened. I know they opened their parks today. Did you open the pools today, too, John?
The pools are opening next Monday, the fifteenth, on a two-hour block schedule.
I think we've got everyone back. So, um, we'll just, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, board member comments, uh, and reports. And we'll go, uh, since we went alphabetically and started with Mr. Haley last time, we'll start with Mr. Tally. And go in reverse direction this time.
Um, I don't have much. I think I said it all earlier, so, um, I bought a new camper. I'll just let you guys know that, so we'll lighten it up that way. So I'm excited to camp. And my, my son is, he is, uh, bored. Well, well, that's an easy way to put it. And so we need to get something together. So thank you, Mayor Gates, for opening the pool for a little bit, so we can, he can get out and do some stuff. But other than that, I'm sure all of our kids are filling that here in the district. So it's nice to get some activities. I saw the playground here at Glenmere was packed with, with the kids today. Um, and so I think they were waiting. And I don't, I didn't drive by any of the other ones, but it's nice to see the kids out and about getting some vitamin D.
Thanks, Mr. Tally. Uh, Ms. Solis?
So I have had some community members asking about SROs. Um, there's kind of a push, especially in the Denver area, to, uh, end contracts with police officers and having SROs in school districts. So I think that's an issue that we're definitely going to have to touch on and discuss in just what they do, what they don't do. And also the list of practices that we put in place before an SRO is even entering into a situation. And just kind of, again, how we are pushing not only, you know, our teachers to have, you know, close relationships with our students, but also that these SROs are also having relationships with our kids and making sure that we work on those relationships as far as, you know, their first encounter with a police officer and making sure that it's positive. And so I think it's going to be important for us as a district to put a statement out about that and to really list those different things.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Ms. Mueller?
Oh. You know, I.
Sorry.
Yep.
Um, I, I really don't have anything. I just appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
Now, Ms. Mueller?
I was literally going to say the same thing that Terry said. I don't have anything else to add. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to have comments, uh, earlier on. Um, also, just, I guess I just want to remind people that, um, as plans begin to be formulated for the return to school in the fall, the, to keep their eye on the social media postings we have on the district, from the district. I try to forward that, those on. I know that, um, Terry and Rhonda also do, and, and John, and, and Ray, and everybody, really. So just to encourage the public to continue to, to have, uh, keep track of those social media presence where we forward those postings on.
My turn? Okay, I think you're muted, but I think you said it's my turn. Um, the only other thing I thought I would add is just, um, kind of a highlight. Rhonda, um, so eloquently and heartfelt, um, shared, um, and actually spoke for, I think, eight minutes because I, I was recording it at one of the, um, protests and just really was able to engage the crowd and, and, um, to share the need for, um, people of color to, to run for offices. And, um, I just thought it was really powerful, uh, the way you shared your story, Rhonda. And, um, and then one of the quotes that you already mentioned, what we ask our kids to stand up for bullying, but we don't ask adults to do, um, was also shared by Mitzi Moran, the director of Sunrise, with all the staff. This, this, um, that was one of the, the most powerful, uh, pieces of, of the protest to her. And she shared that with all of the staff. So thank you, Rhonda, for your continued courage and, um, eloquence and, um, yeah, and for serving this community in this capacity. And I can't wait to see what you get to do next.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Uh, Mr. Haley?
Thanks to everybody for being so eloquent, passionate, and spot-on with your comments earlier. What I'm excited about is that when people's words and actions match each other, it creates a quality reputation. And I know that everybody on the board and Dr. Pilch and her cabinet all believe and do that. And I think we need to continue to do that. And, and that's what sets us apart from other districts. We, we do what we say we're going to do, and I'd like to thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. I don't have, have much to add. Uh, Ray, I'm, I was really, uh, sorry to hear, uh, your story and to know that that happened, uh, just in the last week. And so, um, I'm sorry to hear that. And, um, but, uh, I'm very proud, uh, to be on this board and, and to serve with this group of people. And, um, I'm very hopeful that, um, that we, we will see real and meaningful change, uh, in our community and in our country. And so, um, uh, come tonight, sad, but, but also hopeful. Uh, that's.
Michael, could I just add something?
Yes, Terry?
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm a little, I feel like I'm a little delayed. Um, is that you?
Yes, I, I rose my, I, I put my hand up, but yeah, anyway. Um, I just wanted to go back. It's okay. I just wanted to go back to what Natalie said, um, and really thank, thank Rhonda. I have been at a couple of events where, uh, she has spoken and, um, her pride in her community and just, um, the pride that she has in, well, it's not necessarily pride, but just your advocacy and your words and your passion. It means so much. And although I was only able to go to one protest, I know that there were several District Six teachers there. And, um, they're very appreciative of our presence. And so I, I think the most, the more of us that can show up, um, Saturday night at the walk, starting at five o'clock at UNC, at the UC, I think that makes a difference and people see that and it kind of reinforces the fact that, um, we're not just sitting here saying things. We really do believe in this. So thank you, Natalie, for bringing that up with Rhonda. I mean, you're just amazing and I am so proud to be on this board with you, so thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I think that's all, uh, for everybody. I don't have, uh, my Wi-Fi is slow, so I can't, I can't seem to, to get the live agenda. Uh, but our next item, uh, on my notes is the, um, the review of upcoming events and, and our calendar review. And so I don't, I don't know what events we have coming outside of board meeting and, and some graduations. And, and so, Dr. Pilch, uh, is there anything else you would like to share with us on this?
Um, I'll, I'll just, uh, the graduations are there. And so we've assigned you to the, your graduation that, uh, is a school you liaison with, with the exception of Mr. Haley, who plans to be out of town. And so, uh, Mr. Matthews, we've assigned that graduation to you. If for some reason you're not able to do the graduation on the date you're assigned, um, if you'll just work back with Christina, um, then we'll work to assign another board member in your spot. At this time, those graduations are planned for eight AM, um, on each of those days. I suppose there's a possibility it could be a little bit later. We're worried about the heat, but we're also worried about all the protocols for getting people checked into the graduation. Um, as we get, um, get into, um, get a little closer to the graduation, we will have guidelines and, uh, protocols, requirements that will, will come with that. At this time, uh, we're certain we'll be able to have graduates. Um, and we'll be able to have a minimal number of, of staff on the stage. Um, so that's why we're limiting to one board member, uh, per event. And we're going to limit to one district administrator, which will be me at, at those events, um, on the stage. We, uh, will be asking district leadership team to help with each of those events, to help us to, really for crowd management. Right now, we're looking at the seating in the stadium. Uh, and we're hopeful that we might be able to allow some guests. So we're, we're working on that, um, guests with protocols and requirements. Um, but there'll be more to come on that and we'll be able to finalize that here in the next, uh, few weeks. Then the other piece in here, I think, uh, President Matthews, is just, um, a tentative board work session on August seventh, all day from eight to four. Um, and then, um, coming back on August tenth for our regular board meeting and hopefully, uh, beginning to do those in person, um, by that date with some possible protocols in place. So, um, and then, of course, it's not here, but we will be planning a meeting either June twenty-second or June twenty-ninth, a very brief meeting to approve budget and to approve those big contracts for the school year. So I think that's the big deal stuff that's there, unless there's anything else you all are concerned about.
All right, thank you, uh, Dr. Pilch. Get those on your, on your calendars, everybody. And we're to a budget update. And so, um, something we've been all anxiously waiting to see. So, Dr. Pilch, we'll give it back to you.
Thank you, uh, President Matthews. And I see Christina has put in the chat that she does need to order, uh, robes for those of, uh, graduations that require robes. So, uh, she'll need to know if you're changing dates and if you're, you know, what the robe requirements will be based on if you change dates. So do that as soon as possible, please. All right, well, we're pleased to actually finally have some information from the state. Um, this came to us over the weekend with some, uh, uh, draft run of what the District Six, uh, funding allocation might look like. Um, we've got, um, it's overall, uh, you know, it's, it's not great news. Great news would be that we were wrong in terms of what we predicted and that the cut is, um, far less than we predicted. What you will see is the, um, the cut that's coming to us. Once you look at the cuts from the state and the other loss of revenue from mill levy override, um, oil and gas and other areas that we're, we are right where we need to be, um, in terms of the reductions that we have made. So with that, um, I see Christina has begun to share the screen. So I will ask, uh, Mrs. Sponsor, our chief financial officer, uh, to take it from here and to give you some overview. And then, uh, we'll be happy to answer questions after that. Mrs. Sponsor?
All right, thank you, Dr. Pilch. Um, we are actually just thrilled to have some good information and some solid, solid numbers to work with at this point. So I put together just a very high-level, quick overview to kind of let you know where we are at the moment. Um, the School Finance Act was introduced in the House on June fifth. And it was moving through committees. I believe it was heard in the House Education Committee on Saturday and the House Appropriations Committee, I think, today. I am not sure what. I am not sure what the House Appropriations Committee might have done with it, but it was moved from the House Education Committee without any further amendments. So that's always a good sign. What it does do is it increases the budget stabilization factor by $612 million to $1.184 billion. So almost $1.2 billion is the budget stabilization factor. It drops the average per pupil funding across the state by 5%. And then because of all of the impacts of different things on assessment and accountability, all of those things needed to be addressed through legislation. And so the Joint Budget Committee opted to run those bills, all of those changes, through the School Finance Act. So that's kind of all housed in one place. Next slide. The next slide is the impact to District Six. And so one of the things that really stood out to me when I was looking through the data around the School Finance Act is that they are projecting an increase to our at-risk pupil count by almost 17%. So that's a significant jump in our, basically it's our free lunch students. So students that qualify for free lunch are considered at-risk in the School Finance Act. And so that increase really kind of almost skews the numbers a little bit. And so what that does ultimately, when you run that increase through the funding formula, is that gives us an additional $3.7 million in the funding.
So Megan, I want to interrupt for a moment there because I did have a question today from a board member. They did not change the at-risk factor in the funding formula. We want them to change the at-risk factor one day. That's our greatest hope. I want to be clear, this is not a change in the at-risk factor that would absolutely benefit District Six. It is simply a change in the number of students that they are projecting that we will have, who will sign up and qualify for free lunch services. That's, so they're saying that we're going to grow by over 10% in our number of students who we will qualify for free lunch.
Yes, that is correct.
That would then result in additional dollars for District Six.
Correct. So I think the hope was, and there was some conversation around that there might be some willingness to change some of the factors in the funding formula. And so there was even some conversation right up until the day that the School Finance Act was actually introduced, that some of those factors might be adjusted a little bit. But that actually did not happen in this draft of the School Finance Act. So the fact that it's progressed through the House Education Committee, I don't believe they will take that on. Several districts would like them to, and others do not. So I think it's just such a political issue that they need to get this passed through the House and the Senate, and they didn't want to take on that extra challenge of changing those factors in this environment. So with that assumption of that increased at-risk pupil count, what that means for us in terms of funding is the School Finance funding decreases by $8.4 million or 4.7%. The thing that I want to point out is if the at-risk count does not increase like that, then our total funding decrease would be $12.1 million, or about 7%. You can see the importance of that at-risk number. And what that really means for us is that we need to be very diligent in making sure our families apply for free lunch and fill out that free and reduced lunch application. That will have significant impact, one way or the other, on our funding formula and what funding we get. So the next slide. In looking at all of the general funds, so not just the School Finance Act funding, but all of the other funding sources that come into the general fund, we're looking at about a $13.5 million decrease, about 5.8%. And that really accounts for changes in our mill levy override, of the oil and gas royalties that we're getting, earnings on investments, and then a whole bunch of other state-funded programs that have been reduced. So far, as Dr. Pilch said, all of the budget cuts that we have identified are sufficient to cover this decrease in revenue. So we feel like we're in a really good place, and we have made the cuts that we need to make. As painful as they are, it feels good to know that we don't have to go deeper. It's, no, it is difficult to make these decisions, but we're thankful that we don't have to do any additional cutting at this point. So we're in a good place. It's certainly not the greatest news, but it could have been a lot worse as well. So with that, I will turn it over to you all if you have questions.
Mr. Hayfley?
Ms. Sponsler, thanks for your continued incredible efforts on this. And this may be a question that can't be answered. I know that in the past, we've had some challenges getting people to sign up for free and reduced lunch. And if you were to hypothesize as to what the numbers might be, can you give me an idea? And then, this is for Dr. Pilch, maybe this is an inappropriate question. How can we, as a district, emphasize the value and importance of doing that? Thank you.
Well, I don't know that I can give you an exact number, but I do think there is an element of fear out there for some of our families to complete the form. We do our best to help communicate that this information is kept confidential, has no impact on any other programs that families might be eligible for. The information is not shared with any other entity. So we try our hardest, and really what we have found to be most successful is when principals work directly with families because the principal that is in that child's school has credibility and provides that reassurance. So we work really hard with our principals in each school to help get those forms back from families.
Do you have any idea, though, like 1%, 2% that we miss, even a ballpark now?
I really, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
When we look at poverty in the community, we know that our community has about 60% of folks who qualify for living in poverty. Now, whether those, that lines up with children who attend our schools and children who qualify, this number would take us up over 60%, right, Megan?
Right.
And it would require us to see an increase of about 11% in our actual applications that would qualify over what we qualified the current school year. So I mean, it's a heavy lift to, I mean, it's 2,300-plus-ish students. So it's a heavy lift to increase at that amount. So what we believe, kind of the way we've done this budgeting work all along is, realistically, best case scenario would be to get those numbers of students qualified and be serving them. The reality is we probably will get somewhere between zero and that number, and probably at least 5% or so we can get. But it'll be a heavy lift for us, and we'll do a lot of, we'll do a campaign around it in August, as soon as we're able to do that. And we'll get our principals involved and work as hard as we can to get as many families qualified as we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You can raise your hand or just speak up if you want to.
Michael?
All right.
It is heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking that we are, that we have to rely on our students from free and reduced lunches for our budget. And I mean, I know we don't have any control over that, but it's just heartbreaking. And I think that we will have more students, obviously, that are going to qualify for this. But if we can do anything, I mean, all of us can do anything to just get more funding because this is just heartbreaking.
Agreed.
I think what we would look to the board to give us advice on at this point is, if you have other things you want us to be looking at, or if you're comfortable with us moving forward, you know, we need to meet with our Teachers Association and finalize the reopening, the opening of the contract that we initiated here over a month ago, and actually give them an opportunity to finalize that negotiations with us and then to begin to move forward with our tentative agreements that we have in place. And they would have to work to be ratified. At the point we would bring you the budget proposal, we would hope to bring you the ratification from the Teachers Association as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Are there any other questions from board members? It's hard to say losing $13.5 million is good news, but it seems like good news, given what it could have been. And as you said, Terry, it's tough to, it's tough to think about what, that our kids are falling into poverty, a greater percentage of them, and that's what helps out our budget. It's hard to be excited about that, and yet, and yet, we're, we're not excited. But yeah, that's just heartbreaking, as you said, to hear that we need kids to fall into poverty to make our, to help make budget. If there aren't any other questions, we'll move on to the next item of business, knowing that Dr. Pilch and Ms. Sponsler have everything they need to proceed. All right, our next item is the survey results and plans for reopening. And another item that we're excited to hear plans for, especially given what you told us, Dr. Pilch. So I'll give it back over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. And Christina, if you'll just hold on the screen share, please. No, go ahead. It's fine. I will, I want to first say, we have this item scheduled for a full hour. Because we were in a very different place a week ago when we prepared this item. I don't, I don't know that you'll want to spend a full hour on this item. We'll spend as much time on it as you would like. But I will just start with saying that we received new news from the governor on Friday afternoon, that his expectation is that we open schools mostly in the same way we have had school in the past, more typical than not with most students, with requirements and guidelines in place to do that. Prior to that conversation on Friday, we had really been preparing for the likelihood of only being able to have, you know, like half of our students in our school at any given, in any school at any given time. It does not look like that will be the recommendation as of right now. Now granted, it's June, and we've got to get to August, and another surge or outbreak could change things. But I really want to frame this with saying, it is our intent to open school with most of our students in August. We understand we will have some families who may choose to remain online full-time, and we'll need to provide that option to them. And, you know, some families have already said to us, I'm not coming back. There's too much risk. You know, we're going to want an online option. And so we'll have that available to families. But overall, we intend to bring schools and staffs back. And I'll talk more as we go throughout the presentation about what that will probably look like. Some of you commented in your comments in the business meeting that school will look very differently in the fall. It's not going to look like it has in the past, and that is absolutely still true. It will look very differently. It will not look the same and will not feel the same as it has in the past. However, it's going to be short-term, and the good news is, we think we will be able to open with most of our students and most of our staff. So that's on a full schedule every single day. So that is very, very good news. Now, those schedules within the school are going to look very differently than they have in the past, and there will be restrictions and requirements and rules that both students and staff have to follow. But the good news is, you know, we think we're going to be able to open with students and staff coming back full-time. So with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Dattery, and we can start the slides. We did do a survey with parents. She'll walk you through those results and talk a little bit about those, and then talk to you about the plans we've been making. What we do know about the plans we are making, we very likely will still need all of these plans at some point throughout next school year. There very likely could be a time we need to fully close a classroom or classrooms, or fully close a school. We're going to try to avoid that, if at all possible. I'll talk about what has to be in place to actually close a whole school. And then there will probably be, there may very likely be a time when part of our kids are learning remotely, in part or not. So with that, Stacy, I'll let you go ahead and take it, please.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch and members of the board. I appreciate the time tonight. And as Dr. Pilch said, we will share with you a little bit on what the scenarios are for this coming year, as well as then what our survey data told us as we surveyed parents and staff members the week prior to last. So as was in your board backup, were these four different scenarios. And as Dr. Pilch outlined them, the first scenario is, and looks like this is what really we will be able to do, per the latest information from our governor's office, and that is in-person learning for all of our students, knowing that there will be, as you mentioned, some of our students have already indicated to us that they will be, or their families, their parents would like for them to learn still at home. And so we will have a fully online option available for them. The second is in the case that at some time during the year, it sounds, won't be to start the year, but there could be times where we will be fully remote for learning, either for some or for all of our students. And so that will, we do have that possibility as well, and we're working on that. The third is where we would have that combination of in-person as well as remote learning. Again, that could be something that while we won't, does not sound at this time that we will be starting the year in this scenario. It is something that we need to have in place and ready to go, and that could look like any one of these four models. And this is what we also surveyed our parents on to see what would be, and our staff, what would be most preferable for them in terms of their environments at home, and what would be most conducive for them if we were in combination model. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Stacy. You could tell I was waiting. I think, I want to preface that these models were built under an assumption of about 10 days ago that we would only be allowed to have 10 to 15, 15 at most, people in a classroom at one given time. So assuming we would not be able to bring back our entire student body into the school at one time. The information from the governor and from the physician, Department of Public Health and Environment, their recommendation is that we be allowed to have almost typical class size. I mean, I think he likes the number 25, and uses the number about 25 students in a classroom. But so that recommendation of being able to go to almost a typical class size is a very different recommendation than only being allowed to have 10 or so students in a classroom. So that shifted our, you know, that is really dramatically shifting our work and hopefully limiting or allowing us not have quite so many limits on what we would do in the fall. Now, we also know that at any point, if there isn't, you know, a significant outbreak in a community, that there could be new recommendations that come into place around the social distancing and around the number of folks that can gather in one group, and around, you know, even having the school open. What is being allowed right now is to allow 25, for example, students, young people, athletes, participate in parks and rec programs, 25 people on this team, 25 kids on this team. So you've got 50 kids mixing, but you know who those So you've got fifty kids mixing, but you know who those fifty kids are, who those fifty athletes are. So should there be a positive case, then you know who else would need to quarantine within those fifty athletes. And so that's kind of the thinking they're now applying to K-12 being able to come back. Back to you, Stacy.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Would you like for me to still walk through these combination models, do you think?
I think the board has this all in their packet. They've probably reviewed them. So I think you're okay to skip that, and then as they have questions, we can come back to them.
Sounds good. Because this is probably not what we thought it was going to be. This is less...
Yeah, it looks like starting in August will be number one or number two. We either won't be able to open because there'll be such a significant outbreak, or we will open. And most students will be back.
Very good. Thank you. So if you could go to the next slide, Christina. Thank you. So going to the next slide really starts the results of our parent survey. So I want to go through a few of these slides with you all, and know that we asked our parents not only what kind of learning environment would they, would be most preferable, but a few other questions. And the first one was around transportation. We asked parents how would they be needing, what would be the transportation method for their child or children to get to school? We asked separately at elementary, middle, and high, because it can look slightly different for the different grade levels. And what you see in that yellow band is the ridership of students that parents are indicating at this point in time their children will use the school bus. And we've looked at that in terms of what is typical, and it's trending overall that it is similar, though more data we are collecting on that to compare to our current ridership. But you can see, based on the number of survey results that we gathered, that there is a number of parents who will still want their child to be transported using the school bus. The next slide is asking about before and after-school activities and athletics, and would their child be participating? We preceded this question with, did their child participate in this last year? And then would they have their child participate? No, their child might not be interested. Or no, they are not comfortable due to COVID-19. And you can see that there is a percentage of students that, parents who did indicate that for their child. A fair number, almost thirty percent, were in the maybe. So I think there's still a number of parents who are either uncertain to whether or not their child is interested and/or if they feel comfortable with a number of parents indicating that they would. In English, this is in English, mind you, of the three thousand three hundred and fifty, forty-four percent of English-speaking parents were indicating that their child would participate. In the next slide, you can see, out of three hundred and seventy-two parents surveyed in Spanish, fewer Spanish-speaking parents said that they would feel comfortable with having their child participate in before-after-school activities and/or athletics, with a fair number in the maybe, and then in the no, twenty-three percent indicating that they did not due to COVID-19. So that gives us some indication about some of the before and after-school, as well as athletics. In the next slide, six, this next two slides, the first one being in English and the second in Spanish, it was really around their preferences to ranking first, that would they want their child or children to come back to in-person learning in combination learning, or to have them be fully remote and at home in their learning? And so we asked parents to indicate their first choice, second choice, and third choice. And you can see from this, first choice is in blue, second choice red, third choice is in orange or yellow in that third bar. And you can see by far, in both English as well as in Spanish in the next slide, when we get to that, you will see that most parents want their child to come back in a traditional in-person learning environment. And here's the second slide. So it trends very similarly, with the second choice being the combination, and the third choice being fully at home and remote. And then in the next slide, which you can, that we then asked parents around those four different models that were in your board backup. So very quickly, that first one is the two days a week back-to-back. So half of our students would come, say, on a Monday and a Tuesday, and the other half of our students would come on a Wednesday and a Thursday. And/or say Thursday, Friday with Wednesday. One day of those five days, at any rate, would be fully remote for all students. What we have, what we thought about doing was Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday, with that Wednesday being in between, so that it would allow for deep cleaning, and all students would be fully remote. And on the two days of the week that students are not in school, and that is in the first AABB, as well as in the AB alternating days, the second option, half the students are in-person, while the other half are at home doing their in, their remote learning. But they're still in school, it's just at home doing school. So those are the first two options, with the third set of bar graphs being every other week. So that would mean half of our students would come, say, on the first and third weeks of every month, and the other half of students would come to in-person learning on the second and fourth weeks of the month. And when they are not in school in in-person learning, they are at home doing remote learning. So you can see how that went. And then the last set of options was an option where really only about a fourth or a third of the students would come one day a week. If, in fact, we had, if in fact, we have a scenario where we can only have no more than ten students in a class at a time, that would have significantly reduced the number of days that students could have been in in-person learning at school. So that's that fourth option. So with those four different scenarios, in both English as well as in Spanish, in Spanish, it was slightly higher for the two days back-to-back coming. But you can see in both the, for English as well as in Spanish, the first two options of students coming two days a week in in-person learning, and then remote learning for the other three days a week, trended better than did the other two options of either alternating weeks or coming only one day a week. And like I say, that was both in the English and in the Spanish results, Spanish-speaking parents' results as well. Finally, for parents, we surveyed, asking them about their internet access and what the availability was to access to internet in the home, should we do remote learning. You can see out of three thousand three hundred and fifty responses from English-speaking families, ninety-six percent said they indicated they did have access, with ninety-one point nine, almost ninety-two percent of our students out of three hundred and seventy-two responses of Spanish-speaking parents said they also have access. So over ninety percent of parents who responded to the survey indicated that they do have internet access in the home, that students would be able to then access remote learning should they have to. So that is good. Certainly, this is not all of our parents, but it is a good representation. The last two slides, then, I will go to those and then stop and call for questions, and we can have a conversation about what this is telling us. The last two questions were staff survey results. And the first one is, again, asking that same question of staff. What did they, what do they prefer should we have to do a combination of in-person and remote learning? And you can see, really, they trended very similarly to what our parents said, which is, and first choice being either the two days a week back-to-back or the every-other-day, two-days-a-week options, with really the other two of the every-other-week or the only-one-day-a-week being the lesser of the two options for our staff. So I think most staff really believe that they need to see, for consistency's sake, to keep kids on track, that if we were to have to go to any kind of combination learning option, they need to see kids on a more regular basis, a couple of, a minimum a couple of days a week in order to continue to keep them going. And when we talked with staff, when we did this survey, it came out that way. And as well, we did talk with our GEA leadership, as well as some principal leadership, and they indicated the exact same results that you see here. And then the last question that we asked our staff would be, was around if they are interested in teaching remotely in an online environment, if that was something that they would want to do. And as you can see, just about a quarter of our teachers, just shy of that, indicated that they would be interested in that. And if they are interested, we asked them to then follow up, giving us their name and what school they work at, so that we can follow up with them individually as we continue to move into the fall of 2020. And knowing that regardless, this will be an option that we will provide for students and families who want that option. So with that, I'm going to stop and open it up, turn it back over to you, Dr. Pilch, and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Great job. I will just say that we appreciate the nimbleness that's coming our way from the governor now around this. And we will very likely, we need this information regardless, because we very likely will have to, as Stacy likes to say, pivot as we get into the school year. And we, you know, we face what comes at us here in our community. So maybe I'll just share a little bit about what the governor is saying about coming back, and then we'll open it up to you all after that for advice, questions, comments. So what the governor said to Superintendent Son Friday, and I'm making some assumptions, he may have said the same to the State Board of Education today, because he was meeting with them. But I don't know that any of us got a chance to tune in. But he, what he is saying is, the importance is around cohorting students and keeping students in the same cohort, and knowing who students have interacted with, so that if we have a positive case, we're able to identify who might have been exposed. And then they would bring in a sweep team and give us advice on how to manage that. They would provide testing at that point, and, you know, advise us on managing that outbreak, which remember, you know, two cases is an outbreak. So, you know, we feel optimistic about what the governor has said. He has said that staff should be wearing masks, and that we should be creating a culture of mask-wearing in our communities, and that it's socially appropriate and acceptable to wear masks. He did say, he does not think it's realistic for children to wear masks all day long, and that there would be times probably that we would want to require students, we may want to require students. He did say that it will be a local school decision. There will not be a statewide decision around mask-wearing for students. That we will need to make that decision locally. So we're particularly interested in your feedback on that tonight. And we'll probably come back to that again in June, I mean, at the later meeting in August, actually, when we all come back together in August. We do, you know, what we, what we are hearing the governor talk about is that when students are in large congregant areas, you know, entering and leaving the building, changing classes between, in passing periods, going to the cafeteria, those times, that those would be the appropriate times for students to wear masks. But in the actual classroom, if we're cohorting kids, that it's probably not as necessary for us to require masks the entire school day. He did remind us that students are the least at risk of this virus, and that we should do everything we can to protect our employees who are older, those employees who are in their sixties and seventies, is what he was most concerned about. So we're feeling optimistic. I think at this point, we would say, we'd like to bring our teachers and our students back with revised schedules within the school day. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Asking, requiring, if it looks like the board can support this, requiring adults to wear masks. And then, you know, at times, requiring students to wear masks, acknowledging especially little kids, and some children with disabilities and things that are going to struggle with mask-wearing, and, you know, we're going to have to be sensitive to that. It's much easier to do what the governor's asking in an elementary school. You can keep the kids in the elementary classroom and bring teachers to them. You know, take that group of kids out to recess on their own, bring them back, even bring lunch into the classroom if we need to. When you get to middle school and high school especially, that gets a little more complex. We've had a couple of lengthy meetings with high school principals. We're coming back together at the end of the week with them to look at their schedules, but probably looking at far fewer classes this first semester, and probably in longer blocks of time, so that we can have fewer numbers of students mixing as they go throughout the school day. Still probably going to mix with a hundred and twenty-five students, ten hundred and fifty students or so probably throughout your school day, depending on how we build this thing out. So the high school schedule is probably going to be the most impacted, and will probably look the most different than in the past where kids have had, you know, seven and eight class periods. They've gone from period to period, and everybody's out in the hallway at the same time, changing classes. Those are the kind of things we're, you know, we're trying to figure out how to address.
Ms. Nash?
Okay, so I had a couple of questions. I was curious with the survey, if you know, did we capture responses from any families who speak a language other than English or Spanish?
And then... No, we did not, Natalie, and we just weren't able to.
I knew that we weren't probably able to send the survey, but sometimes even there's an English speaker in the family. So we sent the message out to all...
Yeah, everybody received it. But, and they may have been able to translate it, you know, and then send it and respond, and then translate it back to us. But we don't have an ability to know if they did that.
Okay. So then for high school, does that mean potentially less electives?
Yes. It absolutely does mean that, at least for first semester. And so that's the message, you know, that I'm asking principals to send to everyone, is this is short-lived, you know, it's not forever. And the important thing is, we're getting you back to school. But it very likely means fewer electives, or electives looking very differently. So one of the things we talked about today is, you know, rather than having six different kinds of physical education classes that kids can choose from, that we just say, "Physical education", and then within that, the physical education teachers figure out who gets to win, and how you do team sports, when and how you do, you know, conditioning, so that we're limiting those, you know, that cohort to a smaller number of students, rather than having hundreds of kids mixing.
Yeah. Then I thought I would also show you, we just recently got a little bag of swag from Sunrise, and they have these very simple, it's basically just like a strap of T-shirt. But we could make District Six ones, and then everybody could have a little mask.
We are working on a partnership with the Success Foundation, where we're hopeful that they will have volunteers actually make masks with school colors for schools to have at their sites, knowing that, you know, there's just no way to make the numbers of masks you would need to have a new mask or two masks every single day, you know, for twenty-two thousand students. But having, you know, hundreds of masks available that volunteers have provided at our school sites.
Yeah, I know so many people who are making them and have donated them all different places. So we get the word out that now you need to donate them to schools, then I bet we'll get a bunch.
I think, we think so, too.
I think it was Rhonda, and then Pepper.
So as far as the masks are concerned, would these be cloth masks that we would have staff wear, or what kind of masks would they be wearing?
It would be, that's what, what the governor is recommending is that they provide their own mask, and our legal counsel is recommending that as well. So they're not a medical-grade mask, Rhonda, I think if that's your question, unless they provide their own medical-grade mask. But it's really, you know, the governor's recommending a mask of even, you know, a homemade cloth mask is appropriate.
Okay. And then my next question is, I can tell you just from wearing a mask when people come into our waiting room, as long as there's people in the waiting room, I keep a mask on. It's extremely hard to talk and hear and listen to people when they have masks on. So I kind of worry about our teachers when they're, you know, talking to students, and just how difficult that's going to be. Did the governor say anything around that?
Yeah, we're very worried about that as well, Rhonda, very worried. And especially, you know, Stacy keeps reminding me about the teaching of young children reading, and phonics, and phonetics, and the importance of being able to see your mouth and the child's mouth when you're doing that. So he actually referenced that there may be times when the teacher is able to remove her mask or his mask in the classroom. Again, they're coordinated with these students. If they're able to get the physical distance in the classroom from their students, that it, that it may be appropriate for them to remove the mask when they are in the classroom with the students, particularly if they're not, you know, working closely, shoulder-to-shoulder with students, and they're able to get some physical distance. So, you know, we'll have to figure that out as we get into this, because, yeah... So, you know, we'll have to figure that out as we get into this because, yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, and that's exactly what, you know, those are the conversations we're having.
And the other question I had is, I know for us in the medical and dental fields, we usually would wear a mask and a shield if we're talking to people. Are the shields any better for teachers to have, like, when they do want to, you know, maybe take the mask off to speak and stuff?
Yes, and we have ordered shields for every school site, not enough for every teacher, but to have a set of shields at every school site, particularly for some of our staff who work with children who have more exposure to bodily fluids. Thank you, Natalie. But you see the mask here under the shield, right? So that's the appropriate use of the shield, is to also have the mask. So that doesn't solve your problem of needing to see the mouth, but, you know, we'll work with health officials on the appropriate use of the shields, and we have ordered some. So we will have some available for staff use.
I'm just thinking that if the teacher is having to vocalize, and she's probably going to have to do it a little louder when she's talking to people, at least the shield would have some kind of cover versus just taking the mask off and saying it and then having that go out into the, to the air. So I'm wondering if the shield would be at least a little bit of help while she's saying things, and then the mask can go back on underneath the shield when she's not, or he's not.
Yeah.
Kind of like the Plexiglas at the door type of thing.
Exactly.
I have another question, and I know we're talking about that, we're going to pivot. Just something I heard from a student who's going to college is that they are going August through, like, right before Thanksgiving and then not coming back until January so that it's not like break, come back, break, come back with like the opportunity, I guess, for infection or something like that. Also, kind of like trying to remove a large portion of flu season from the school year. So it's just an idea.
Yeah, you know, we have had some conversation about, is this the time we look at year-round school? Unfortunately, you know, those are really big, complex conversations to have with your community and with our teachers. And so I don't know that we can be ready to, well, I know we can't. We're not ready to do that by August, but I, it is a conversation that we have been having. There is a committee that came out of negotiations last time that's actually talking about the possibility of year-round school. Changing the school calendar, I think, without great input from teachers especially, as well as families, would be, would be really complex to do. The other thing I think that we're up against that the colleges are not up against is instructional minutes. You know, they're not mandated by instructional minutes, they get a set, what a semester course is. And I'm sure, you know, I'm sure there's things they have to do to meet accreditation, but, you know, we're funded on our instructional minutes. And so that makes it complex too, unless we were able to come back much earlier, which we really can't do with our master-teacher contract without having negotiated that.
And there's childcare for families and things like that. I just was figuring if it's like, if we have a choice between like shutting down again or if we can just eliminate, but, yeah, you're on.
Well, and, you know, Natalie, you know, depending on what we hear from health officials, I think really where you kind of go with that is, do we look at this and go, oh, we're going to take the month of December off and we're going to stay until the, you know, end of June, for example. But we, you know, we need to be having a lot of conversation with our community to do that. But I think that's kind of what you're, you know, that, I think that's the direction you may be asking about.
Not necessarily permanently, just for this time, like, hopefully permanent.
Pepper, I think it's you.
So I have a couple of questions. One is actually my concern about whether high schools are going to remain open campuses for lunch. Because while with middle school and elementary, you know, maybe middle school, we can't limit them to their classroom, we can still limit them to be on campus during lunch, but that has not been traditionally the case among our high schools, and I'm nervous our parents are not, I mean, you know, there's no one so invincible as a high school student, and I'm not convinced they're going to wash their hands and use good social distancing protocols when not on campus. What are our thoughts on that?
So no decision has been made yet, Pepper, but we are discussing how do we close campus if we need to? And how do we provide lunch shifts, which we've never done, which is pretty archaic in my mind, by the way? You know, we've, we release, this is a Colorado thing, we release everybody all at once and everybody scatters for lunch and comes back 45 minutes later, whatever it is. So we are looking at models that would prevent that from happening. So even if it is an open lunch, there would still be probably four different periods of time in the day that would be that open lunch where the kids would have the opportunity to then again, you know, they're interacting with probably about a fourth of the student body, but you at least know the fourth of the student body they're interacting with. Or do we close lunch and serve lunch in the classrooms? And so, you know, we just began that conversation, this part of the conversation with high school principals today. We need to get some insight from nutrition services on what they're even able to do. They have never fed our entire student body at a high school. I mean, do we even have the capacity to feed every single high school? Or if we say you're, you know, for this period of time, we're closing campus because we've got to, you know, we've got to keep the cohort together to keep the spread of the virus so school can remain open. And that's, that's the thing at the end of the day, is this is every effort to have school remain open, just like every effort to wear masks now and to social distance is about opening our community back up, opening our economy back up. This is about opening our schools back up and being able to keep them open, and to do so, we're going to have some, probably some restrictions we've never had before.
Well, and I would encourage that if we do allow open campus for lunch, that's an opportunity to teach students their accountability to others in the community and that most restaurants, fast food places, and other assorted places are requiring masks for entry. So our, I would say that if that is what we do, that we do require masks of our high school students.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we'll take guidance from the Health Department on this. We are not, you know, there are school districts with far more high schools than what we have in Greeley and far larger student bodies. So everybody in the state's, you know, beginning to struggle with this, I assure you now, because every plan, all of us were working on was this plan of how do you alternate days or weeks, because we're not going to be able to have our whole student body here, which is a completely different ballgame than everybody's coming back in. So this, you know, of course, there's a whole new set of questions that come with all of this that we're now beginning to work on.
And then I have one last question, Dr. Pilch, which is really a concern for teachers, especially teachers that may have immunocompromised situations, having their flexibility without needing to know all of their health history. It is a challenge, I know, but I want to make sure they have the possibility of not coming back. And then the final thing is, if a teacher does get sick, are we developing contingency plans for other teachers to take over their classes and continue with that, that teaching?
So to take the first question first around teachers who might be immunocompromised or maybe have family members who are, you know, they will need to use their own leave unless they are, they happen to be one of those teachers we're able to assign to online teaching. They will be required to use their own leave. We very likely will open back up the opportunity to take a leave of absence without pay. Typically, we have, those are approved well in advance and would already be approved by now for next school year. We very likely will reopen that opportunity so staff can request leave without pay as we go into this school year if they just feel like they cannot come back. But I'm sure you, I mean, as much as we were committed to paying teachers and, well, all of our staff, this spring, when we had to send everybody home, we cannot continue to do that into the fall if people are not working. I mean, we just can't, and especially in this budget environment we're in now. But we will work with employees around, you know, figuring out how they use their sick leave and how they, they take, you know, or they take leave without pay. What we also know is there is this sick leave bank that the association runs, but they don't have the numbers of days in that sick leave bank to manage the numbers of people who might say, I don't feel comfortable coming back to work. So, you know, we're going to have to navigate that as we go forward. On the contingency plan for covering for staff, we'll continue in the way we have in the past with having teachers cover. But we also, you know, we also have worked to build up a pool of subs who can cover for online teaching and may need to cover for online teaching. But I, you know, I think, I think our issues with substitute teachers will continue to be what they've been year after year. I, you know, COVID and plans for COVID are not going to help us to solve that problem.
I think it's Mr. Hailey.
Thank you. As we adjust to modify going into this year, is this where you and Ms. Sponsler plan on spending the CARES dollars, and does this fit within the framework of the expectations of the government?
We think it, well, sure, but I, we'll tell you, we've spent most of those CARES dollars already. So primarily on technology, internet support, hand sanitizer machines, we've purchased hundreds of hand sanitizer stations to go into our schools, masks, gloves, online content, paying people to do online content, setting up additional health rooms in our schools. So those CARES relief dollars are very important to get the work done we need to get done, and we have, we've, we've almost exhausted them already.
Okay, thank you. So then ultimately, do we have the ultimate say as what occurs in our buildings, or do the people, does the governor's office or the Colorado Department of Health have the ultimate say?
That's a great question, and that's a question superintendents have been asking. Have you been talking to my superintendent friends, Mr. Hailey?
I have, we've talked a lot.
The question is, who gets to make the decision, right? And then like, what happens if you don't follow that recommendation? So what we know is requirements that would come from the Colorado Department of Education or requirements that would come from Colorado Public, Department of Public Health and Environment or an executive order from the governor, we would be expected to follow. Now, the question becomes, who's going to enforce that? You know, is our, are our, you know, county sheriff's department going to come and issue tickets? Is the city going to come and issue tickets? Is the health department going to issue tickets? So it's really about being a good steward of following the recommendations of those I think the hardest part, John, is that in some ways, well, it's easy, it can be easier for us if there's an executive order that just says, bam, you can't have more than 15 kids in a classroom. Well, then we know the fence post, and then, and then we can begin to build that schedule around that. That is not going to happen. He has said he is not going to set a limit in an executive order on class sizes, that he wants the local community to make that decision. So, you know, I would look, I would look to Colorado Department of Ed, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and what they're recommending and what their guidelines are, and then I would look to you all, you know, to help me set those fence posts and help to guide me on that. So for example, when all Thailand decided to go ahead with their in-person graduation with guests, that plan was not approved by anyone. Their board assumed the liability for it, and they actually had an excellent plan, and they were able to have families of eight be together, they escorted them, they were able to social distance them, but their plan went against recommendations of CD-PHE at that time. But our, you know, our county commissioners have said, and they put out a statement that I shared with you all, that they're not going to approve, approve plans, that's not going to be their role to approve plans, and that they recommended that, you know, we work, we follow guidelines as best we can with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, but their role will not be in approving or enforcement agency.
Okay, thank you. And then I find great irony that, you know, if the governor is saying 25 students per class, we're cutting our budget 7%, we've frozen our hiring, and so can you, I'm not, I'm not good at math, can you explain to me how we're going to do that at Greeley Central?
Well, no, it's a great question, John. So part of what we're talking, we're going to do it in lots of creative ways. So first, we take an assumption that probably 10% of our kids are going to remain at home online. The governor has estimated as high as 20%, I don't think it'll be that high here in Greeley. And then we're just, you know, we're getting really creative, like, who are the kids we can have on independent study projects and not actually sitting in a classroom? Who are the kids that can do individual, one-off classes online? So they're not, every kid is not sitting in a classroom for the time that we have them. So I think that's how you accomplish it. I also think that you combine classes that we might not have, they were talking today about combining classes, they might not have combined in the past where you might have had, you know, 12 kids in, let's just say, 15 in one class and 12 in another, and you didn't combine them into one because they were not the exact same content, but they're similar content, where you combine them into one class now. So, you know, it's going to be very complex, and it is not ideal, but it's certainly a better place to work from than we can only have half our kids in our school at any given time.
And from our survey, you think 10% is, are the numbers that are going to stay away during the course of this?
I don't know that we know yet, John. We, what do we have, what, the survey, and then you've got to remember who all didn't even do the survey, because we're, we're only at about 15% of our parents responding, 17% of our parents responding to the survey. But what was the number, Stacy, of those that plan to stay at home? I'll let you pull that up and share that. Well, she's looking for that. I will just add that the other thing that we talked about today was that we very likely will look at every student's graduation plan and, you know, are there classes that we can waive? Are there classes, you know, are there students who've already met their graduation requirements? And should we have them at Ames Community College taking concurrent enrollment? So any of those efforts to move numbers down, hey, baby.
Next question, last one. When we talk about compromised or vulnerable health of our students, who's going to make that determination? Are the families, is the district, is it going to be...
No, families about the student, John?
Yes.
Yeah, no, the family will make that decision. And what, families, our health services are encouraging families to work with their physician to make a recommendation about their attendance at school. So we're not making that decision, our nurses are not making that, but the family's physician would make that decision.
Okay, thanks for answering all those questions.
Stacy, what do we see for now for kids staying online?
So right now, out of 3,722 total responses, so, and know that they're, that that's families of students, and what we're looking, what it says is there's a 502 responses that would like to go...
Stay home.
Yeah, totally online.
So we figured we have 11,000-something families, didn't we, Stacy?
Correct, exactly.
So we have, so of the 11,000-plus, let's just say 12,000 families...
Correct.
We have, you know, nearly 4,000 responses, so it's higher than I thought. I forgot we ran that number, I keep using the 22,000. So our response rate's actually higher. So...
I will say, Dr. Pilch...
Oh, Teresa's trying to get in here.
I just wanted to add really quickly that not all those people answered that question properly, that some of them just put, no, I'm not interested. So we really need to vet that answer better and really analyze that data because it's not 520 people who are requesting that.
No, that's correct. That's what I was getting ready to say. While that is true, some did not, several, as I just am scrolling through, we do have several parents that want, that do want that.
The ones who provided us their name and contact information are the ones who want to do it.
Yeah, and so it's well over 400 still at that number.
Who are interested, yeah.
The majority answered it correctly, yeah. A few did not.
So we'll have to get to the bottom of that.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, yeah.
Carrie, Ray, you guys had your hands up at one time, did your questions get answered?
Yes, my question was answered.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Potts, you probably said this before, and I just missed it. What are the distancing requirements for kids? So we can have 25 in the classroom... So we can have 25 in the classroom, what-
Doesn't look like we're gonna be given distancing requirements, actually, Michael. It does not look like we're gonna be given those, because I think the governor's realized that's not realistic, and that, and it's not realistic if we're gonna have school come back into session. So, you know, he, he was pretty vague about that and said, you know, we wanna get as much physical distance as we can between people, we wanna socially distance as much as we can. One of the things that we talked about today, which will be really uncomfortable for some of our teachers, is we just gotta get all the other stuff out of the classrooms. So if we have beanbags and sofas and, you know, treehouses and, you know, display areas and aquariums and, you know, those things that make classrooms cozy and inviting, I think most, we are probably going to have to make a decision to get rid of most of those things for the fall, so that we can use as much classroom space as possible to spread people out. And so that's a place where I would like your, you guys' advice on that. If you think that's a bad idea, and I'm gonna totally destroy, you know, how the climate of a classroom by doing that, I need to know that from you all, so we get down the road, and I'm not making a decision you can't support. That's one of those decisions. I think another one is, you know, do we give kids more options of classes? Like, at high school, like five classes every single day, knowing they're not gonna get as, quite as much instruction as they would have gotten in a full year of taking those little bit longer blocks, like 70-minute blocks, every single day? Or do we, you know, extend the block more so that kids are getting more instructional time in that individual class? And so those are some things we're struggling with right now at high school, and we don't have agreement among our high school principals. Some of them want more time in an individual class, if they're only gonna be able to, you know, if they have fewer classes, but they're in the whole school day. So if you think like four big blocks that are still your 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM school day, or do you try to do five or six blocks, but no, you're not gonna get near as much instructional time in each of those blocks for semester? So, we're facing some tough decisions.
I had another question just about portables. Would we put, does that change the number?
We don't think so.
What would do in a portable?
We, only in that to make ourselves feel more comfortable. I don't think the governor is going to give us anything, or the CD-PHE is gonna give us anything around that. But, you know, we did talk about, the most portables are at Greeley West High School, where we have the biggest kids, which is unfortunate. The other thing, John, in answering your question, which of course is about classroom space, that if we do some sort of a four-by-four block, you actually open up more classrooms by doing those blocks, is to have, you know, interventionists and co-teachers and people like that also teaching, so that you don't, you know, you won't have two teachers in the classroom, in some cases, like we've had in the past probably, in order to have fewer numbers of kids in the classroom.
I have a comment about that, Dr. Piltch. You know, personally, I would rather see more classes and less time, because I think our teachers are much more comfortable in establishing what state standards and their content needs to be to meet that. And I, and I've taught with that 95-minute block period, and unless you've done it before, you're really gonna even put our teachers behind a bigger eight ball than maybe even doing distance learning. And so, in my humble opinion, more classes, shorter time, and I think our teachers will be more successful overall.
Yeah, they have to cover all the, the content, though, in a full semester still. So you, you, they need to cover a year's worth of content in a semester if you drop down to five classes that meet every day in those blocks, or we'll be behind come semester break.
Then we need to be prepared for PD to teach them how to put their classes together if they're gonna be 90 or 95 minutes, because that is an incredibly long time.
No, it is, John, it's hard. There's no question, this is gonna be hard, there's no question it's gonna be hard. Yeah, it's hard. You're absolutely right. And it's not just a matter of jamming two class, two classes into a block every single day.
No, okay, thank you.
Can I interject here also, 'cause it adds on to what John said, sorry to butt in, but I'm also worried about programs that have specialized requirements. And so, like, for example, cutting out some of the elective-type courses, well, that's a requirement of the International Baccalaureate Program for them to do in arts, or to do a theater, or to do a music class. So I, I don't know if that is where we would try to create spaces to go to Ames or other, other types of curriculum, but I do, I do get concerned that we don't want to intervene in spaces where it's gonna compromise their-
No, it's a great point, Pepper, and it's a conversation we're having with IB and AP and, and the CTE credentials, all those areas. So very likely, there will need to be some independent study in those areas, at least for this first semester. Because you just, you, I mean, actually, that's where the four-by-four block is better, because you would actually do four full classes the first quarter of the school year, then you do four more full classes the second quarter. Now, you lose the sequencing, and it's very complex. But the five classes, you're only gonna earn credit in five classes for first semester. So, we've gotta figure out which is the better way to go in terms of what we're facing. And if kids have to go online in November, what's better for them, you know? It's complex.
I think it's Rhonda.
So I can tell you, one of the first things that we did when we reopened was to remove everything and anything on all counters and things that could not be wiped down. So, I mean, we don't have any magazines anymore in our, in our waiting room. We don't let people use the water fountains. Everyone had to come in with a mask, there's special mouthwash that we have people rinse with. So I think the more that we can get rid of any kind of clutter that's in our classrooms, even though it's not gonna be as warm and fuzzy as we would like, it will cut down as far as what is spread. And then also, it would be helpful to our janitors that have to come in and actually clean those rooms.
You know, you can't see Ken Henson's face right now, but I can tell you, he is jumping with joy to hear you say all this. I can tell you he is.
I can just tell you from the extra time that it's gonna take to clean things now, 'cause it does, it really adds to our day. The less little things that you have and the less personable things you have, it makes it so much easier. And so, just from experience, I can tell you that. And there's gonna be certain things that you cannot clean, and so if you can remove them, it's best.
Yeah.
And I don't want to add to our custodial crew of already having, you know, to do what they need to do, and add all these little things that are in all these little, in the classrooms and stuff. So I would highly recommend removing anything and everything that you can off of counters.
I agree with Rhonda.
So I guess what I need on coursework, guys, I need some guidance on, when we get to the end of first semester, is it, is your priority that kids will have been able to have earned comparable numbers of credits to what they would have earned had we been in a regular schedule? Is that a high priority? Or is it a higher priority that we have more actual class offerings on a daily basis? So in the first scenario, you would have all those courses, you would just have them in blocks, you know, basically a quarter system of blocks. So the second scenario would be, you wouldn't be able to earn as many credits in first semester, but you would be able to have more course choices in a given day. Where if you do the, you know, the one scenario is only four course choices in a day, maybe, and maybe on one day, it's only three course choices. And if there's a seminar, if they do advisory in there, it could even be three course choices. Whereas the other course choice, they'd have more course choices in a given day, but in first semester, they would only get five classes. Where in the other scenario, they would get eight classes in first semester, well, six at minimum, six or eight, depending on how we build it. So, maybe you don't know.
I think I would defer to the expertise of your principals at the secondary level, Dr. Piltch. I don't, I, my feeling is, you're not gonna, we're not gonna make everybody happy, but I do, I think you're talking about the secondary level, the high school.
I am. And guys, where you're, the pressure, though, is gonna come to you all. If we make a wrong decision here, and kids, whether it's in that day of five classes, they're not getting as many choices, and parents are shook up about that, or whether it's in, as they look at the whole semester, my kid can't get, ever get, you know, stagecraft. So-
No, I agree. It is, it is, it's on us, but I, I think I would want to hear a little bit, maybe more guidance, to have an informed decision, to understand the nuances of the two.
Yeah, that's fair.
I don't remember-
Can we survey parents, Dr. Piltch, on this one, or is that not helpful?
I just think it's too complex. Look how much trouble I'm having explaining it to you guys, and you guys live this every single day. But we could pull DAC in and talk to DAC about it, possibly. Natalie, what were you gonna say?
I can't remember, I think maybe it was Prairie Heights, but one of the administrators at middle school or high school said that they had a lot less behavioral issues when they went away from the block schedule, that kids have a really hard time paying-
Oh, yeah, it's hard for kids. Any way we do this is gonna, it's gonna be a block. The question is, which block do we do? And do we do more blocks, like it, you know, one or two more blocks at 70 minutes? Or do you do it, one fewer block and do it for 90 to 110 minutes would be the model, depending on where we landed.
Well, one other point I think you made, is that the things that make our district attractive are our arts magnet, our STEM, our, you know, all of the extra things that our kids can do. And again, we all have to keep in mind that this is, I mean, I've already told my daughter, who's an incoming freshman, like, the freshman year is not gonna be-
One, this year only, right? We're gonna have a vaccine, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, but, but if we do get rid of so many of those things that is why our students want to come to-
I know.
-our schools, yeah. And so if we, if, I mean, we can't promise it's only one year.
No, you can't. Might be three flu seasons, right? All right, well, that's helpful. I'll, we'll figure it out.
The one other thing I would really recommend is, difficult to fit into that shorter block is science, especially if they're doing any kind of laboratory work. It's, I've heard from many science teachers in the high school level that-
Science teachers like block, they sure do. They love their block day, yeah.
It's really hard to set up an experiment, and by the time you get everything out, you're done, and you haven't had time to do anything.
Yeah, so, as you're having this conversation, are you talking, like, freshmen through senior? For me, it seems like it'd be much different for a senior than a freshman, just based on the graduation and where they are in their credit, so.
Yeah, we, yeah, we think we can cohort freshmen a lot easier than we can seniors, because they almost all have ninth grade English. And actually, we learned today that infinite campus has within it where you can color code, put a color code to kids, and then every, you know, you could cohort together every kid who has LA9 and Algebra I and whatever, Physical Science and whatever, and cohort them together. So it's probably a lot easier with our ninth and 10th graders. I mean, there's gonna be some one-offs, like the kid who needs pre-calculus in ninth grade, they're gonna have to come out of cohort and, for pre-calculus. But, and so then, we look to, who are our seniors where we can waive requirements, 'cause they've already met them in some other way, and, or independent study, or on the Ames campus, or, you know, online, let them go online more than the underclassmen. Is that, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, and you may have already addressed it, but it just seemed, I just wasn't sure where your broadness was, where that conversation was. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think I would prefer the credit hours, Dr. Piltch, for whatever, just as a parent. I just think about, there, there are things that you're trying to get, so many, so many years of a foreign language, how do you, it's already tough to fit things in, so, for what it's worth. Were there any other comments? I don't see any hands, guys.
I just wanted to say that this makes my head explode, and thank you again for you guys working so hard on all these different things. It's like, you kinda, I mean, not like, but it is like, whoop, that's done, but it's somewhat done, and now you just gotta go do the next big thing. So thank you all so much.
Yeah, no, it's, thank you, it's insanity. This is how you define insanity.
It's keeping y'all young, saving off Alzheimer's, like, learning new things, new pathways, yeah.
Gaining weight.
Could I ask one quick question? Just because I'm having some anxiety right now over all this. So I know we, you talked about going in-person beginning of the year, and then with the potential of possibly having to go hybrid, or whatever the model might be. Is that going to be like a Friday afternoon, and you're gonna be like, oh, starting next week, we're gonna be in this different? Because as a parent, I, that is making me scared.
So let me walk through that a little bit, Ray, 'cause what that means. So this idea of cohorting kids is, the intent being that we wouldn't, that last resort would be closing an entire school. So we'd have to have multiple cases throughout the school with different groups of kids to close a whole school. But let's say we have a positive case in a second-grade classroom. We then can look at who has that second grader had close contact with. So what, you know, where, where were they? You know, did that second-grade class mix with this other second-grade class? And then those, those kids' families would be notified and would be asked to self-quarantine, most likely. We would take guidance from the Colorado Department of Public Health on this. They would come in as soon as we had a confirmed case, and they call the sweep team, 'cause they come in and they tell you what to do. They kinda take over and advise you and help you. And they, and then they administer testing also, which would help us to get people back to school and back to work sooner. So I think if we had multiple cases within a school on a Friday, and we realized we had to close, and the health department said, "We recommend you close, we recommend you close for 14 days," and everybody quarantines, and everybody gets tested, then yes, you could be notified on a Friday that we are doing that, and we would very likely begin to implement online learning that next week. But that's worst-case scenario if we had to close. And I will tell you, the governor is saying when you have to close, not if we have to close. So I appreciate you talking about your anxiety, 'cause at some point, we will have to figure out the messaging to parents around this, so they understand that this is possible, so that they can get contingency plans in place for if that, you know, when that happens. He's not saying we will, he didn't say when you have to close an entire school. He says when you have to close a classroom. So he's hoping we can contain this to individual classrooms, or, you know, classrooms, like if you think of, you know, four different teachers who have worked with this student, and their classes that they've mixed in with those kids, and you're, you know, you're keeping it, that, those kids would be the ones that need to stay home. What I don't know, and maybe Natalie or Rhonda, you from healthcare have heard some of this, what I don't know is, once you have a diagnosed case, and they come in and test, do they still require the 14-day quarantine of people who may have been exposed? Or do they say, no, you're okay, you're not testing positive?
I would think, because the incubation period is about like five to 14 days. I would think, because the incubation period is about like five to fourteen days. And if you test negative, you're just testing on that day. So I don't know, I would expect that you would have to be quarantined through that period.
I can actually, this was a situation that I went through as I was exposed, when got tested, it was negative. And they, they gave me a forty-eight hour quarantine, just stay for forty-eight hours, come back and get tested. And if it's negative, then go about your life. So I don't know if that's how it always is or what, but that's just the situation that they gave me.
So you got tested twice within forty-eight hours?
Yes.
We also don't have tests that are accurate for asymptomatic people. You have to have symptoms in order for our tests to be accurate, but there's lots of different kinds of tests.
Any other questions, guys?
Or advice?
I would, yeah, I would probably say the two weeks would be the best thing, just because of liability issues, just to be on the safe side. I mean, I think that's the safest, especially with testing. I mean, Natalie's correct. I mean, some of these people that are asymptomatic, you're not gonna know. And if you just send them back in and people that were exposed around them and you send them back, is that opening up a whole nother, you know, round of it? So I would say the two week thing would be ideal.
CD-PC will guide us on that. I guess I, I think I can share this with you without violating any confidentiality. We did, we, we did have two youth at Pla Val Youth Detention Center test positive. One came into the site positive, and we knew that he was positive when he came in. He was in isolation when he entered, because they, he was, they were both asymptomatic, both never developed symptoms. So he was isolated, you know, from the time he came in. Then there was another youth who they later learned was positive, because they tested everybody, which they were doing in all, had begun to do in all detention facilities. We had another youth who tested positive, asymptomatic again. They interviewed everybody, and really was just one staff member, they ended up sending home to quarantine for the fourteen days. And, and she tested negative, but she was sent home to quarantine for the fourteen days. And then the other youth remained in the same area, who might have been exposed and were not allowed to mix with the other youths. So we've had a little bit of experience with this, with that experience there, around just kind of how they manage it. But I will tell you, I mean, there was a lot of fear when they learned that they had the second youth who was positive, you know. They were so afraid there would be like multiple students and multiple staff who were positive, and that was not the case.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Anything else, guys?
How's your anxiety, Ray? Did we lower it any over this parenting thing?
I just keep thinking, if they call me on a Friday afternoon, how many, how do I take the week off? Like, now you got me thinking of all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. And just know this, that can happen with norovirus. We closed, two years ago, we closed schools because of norovirus and did it on a Friday. What, you know, once we had a certain number of cases, we said, we gotta, we gotta close and clean. So.
Again, thank you for, and Stacy and everybody else, well, your work on this, it does, it kind of makes your head want to explode. Any, we need to move on to school visits. So any, any thoughts, Dr. Pilch, you wanna start this conversation for us?
Just a reminder that we.
Should we have school visits and?
Well, I think we won't know yet if we're gonna have them, so we're not gonna make that decision tonight. But if we are able to do school visits and visitors are allowed in the schools, the question is, do we want to stick to that Tuesday afternoon and that Friday morning? Or do you want us to look at different days? And, you know, we think we'll go ahead and get schools scheduled, and we'll see what it looks like in August, and determine whether or not it's safe for us to go into schools or not. If we do limit visitors to our schools, we won't, we won't be doing school visits either. I assume.
Does that still work for everyone?
I was just gonna say that, I love the, the way that works, because for those of us who can take an early morning off, it's easier. And for those that prefer a afternoon, so to have the two options. I may not make Tuesday afternoons, but Friday mornings at seven thirty, turns out most college students don't want to talk to me then.
I don't see any other hands. Are we, I mean, I'm not gonna assume that, and that we are still in bed with Tuesday and Friday as our, Tuesday afternoon and Friday mornings. That seems to work. Okay.
Awesome.
Great. Thank you all on that. And next item is our community engagement. And I'm not sure that we have any, any updates there as well. Although that will, hopefully, as our community opens up, we'll have more opportunities for engagement.
Dr. Pilch, I really appreciated when we had talking points about various things. I wondered if we could have some about the twenty-five kids per, or if it's kind of still too vague.
Let's, let us get a little further in our planning. I don't even think we're gonna say twenty-five. I, I think what we're gonna start to communicate is that we're gonna come back and we're planning for kids to return to school. I think that's really what we're gonna say. So that you can start saying, good news, looks like we're coming back in August, assuming we don't have another, you know, big peak, another big outbreak in our community. I mean, so I loved, I think, Teri, you made the comments about wearing our masks and social distancing. I mean, if we can keep the infection down in our community, our chances of coming back in August full time with everybody is so much more likely. Rhonda's raising her hand.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Is that a public statement that we would make as a district to encourage people wearing masks that we're looking forward? The kids coming back in the fall, and we really encourage our community members to, you know, wear masks out in public, because that will increase the chances of us being able to have.
Well, we've been saying, and everything that Teresa has put out for me and that I've said, I've encouraged, you know, when I'm talking about this, we've encouraged mask-wearing and social distancing, so we can, you know, we absolutely can continue to do that. And if you all want to do something more that you think will make an impact, let us know what that is.
I think if we did make a statement, it would be an appropriate time to ask for donations of masks if we felt that we were in that space to do that. Because to have some community buy-in, I think, to assisting in that effort is a good thing. And it develops those partnerships that we're constantly trying to, you know, keep up and build.
I see that Teresa posted that we are planning to do a mask-wearing campaign, which we talked about today, actually, that, what does that look like, you know? And, you know, showing people wearing masks, so maybe she'll want to get pictures of you all wearing masks and that sort of thing.
Would we want to do an op-ed?
We sure could. What I think we talked about today was just doing something through, you know, social media and, and print of, you know, wearing masks and then, and have some fun with it, and the importance of wearing masks, and the importance of stopping, you know, I stay healthy for you. And, you know, and then promoting, as Teresa's saying, the campaign that the Success Foundation is going to do around the, of making masks.
I think an op-ed from President Matthews would be a good idea, just to send into the Tribune. I'm not saying they'll print it, but at least submit it.
I think it ought to be Mr. Hayfley that does that, but.
I'm in.
I'm glad, I'm glad to do that, if that's simple. I don't, I don't, I don't know if we need our op-eds for anything else. We don't have any big election stuff. I mean, obviously.
Well, maybe for two seventeen or whatever it's called, two seventy-one, if you guys want to end up supporting that as a board, you may want to use it for that.
Right.
You'd like me as a nurse to write one about masks?
Be good. Are we, are we ready to debrief the work session, guys? All right. Mr. Hayfley, we'll let you, we'll let you lead off.
Thanks to everybody for a wonderful meeting. I know it's a challenge on many levels, and I continue to be impressed by the people that I had the opportunity to work with.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. The good smooth match.
Yes, same. It's continued to enjoy getting to know you all better and see where our passions are aligned for our community and for justice and education. And again, just a huge thank you to Dr. Pilch and your team for thinking of every single thing. There's so, so many details in, doing a great job.
Ms. Mueller.
So I just want to say thank you to Rhonda and Dr. Pilch for not being the only emotional person on the board, because I am. And I love to see that I have partners in that. The one thing I want to say that is always, I don't know why, it surprises me every single meeting, but just the extraordinary talent we have in the administrative team. I am so thankful for Mrs. Bonsler and for Ms. Dattery and Mr. Henson and Teresa and everybody. I don't want to miss anybody. I just, I really truly am awed by all the hard work you do and constantly keeping us up to date with everything that's going on. There's been a lot of moving pieces. So I really, really appreciate how hard you're working. And I think I could speak for the whole board to say, we are very thankful for the work that you do on a daily basis.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Papas.
Yes, I will ditto what everyone has said and hope to see you all on Saturday.
Ms. Elise.
I am just thoroughly impressed and so proud of our district, of all the stuff that we've accomplished with COVID. Just, you know, looking at our budget and working together to make these tough, tough decisions, and just making sure that we always reiterate that it's about our kids, it's about our students, and it's about all of our students. And the fact that we, you know, talk the talk and walk the walk is always so impressive, and I hold my head up high when I go out and talk about it.
Thank you, Rhonda. Mr. Tally.
It's a lot of information and a lot of anxiety on my part right now, but I appreciate it. It's sort of good anxiety, because I'm, it has my brain having to really spin, because I don't have enough to think about already. So I'm really appreciative of all the information, and if it's not numbers, it's information. And I, I leave here with a wealth of knowledge, so very lucky and blessed to be around such a remarkable and amazing group of people.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. I would just say that this has been a good meeting in a lot of respects. I feel like I've not heard a lot of good news recently, and it is good to, it is good to hear that our budget's only getting cut thirteen and a half million dollars. And it is, it is good that our kids are coming back. It's extremely good news. However, we figure out the best way to bring them back, that they're, that they're coming back. So that's very, very hopeful and an exciting meeting in a lot of ways. So echo what everyone else says. Thank you for being such an exceptional board, and thank you for being such an exceptional administration. Dr. Pilch, you have any last words?
Just, you know, just appreciation for all of you and your courage, your wisdom, your dedication. I'm fortunate to have you as a school board. Thank you to all of you. And thanks for complimenting the team. They're amazing.
All right. Well, guys, we can, we'll.
We'll keep you all posted.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye. See y'all soon.